Welcome. Welcome? Can you hear me? I can't hear me. Okay, cool. Welcome, everyone, to the Planning Commission meeting for October 6th. Can we please start with the rule call?
Commissioner Chan.
Here.
Vice Chair Choi.
Here.
Chair Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. All three Planning Commissioners are present with Commissioner Quake being excused.
Thank you. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand. Okay, agenda review. Do we need to make any changes or anything? We're good? Okay, great. We have one set of minutes from our... I said October 6th before because I looked at those. The minutes are from October 6th. Today's the 20th. Any questions, comments, changes, or motions? Okay, we have a second?
Second. Move approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Can we vote?
Thank you. Motion passes 3-0.
All right, thank you. Next up is Public Communication. This is the spot on the agenda where anyone from the public that would like to address the Planning Commission on a topic that is in our peer view but not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom?
No speaker slips, but I do have one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
Alan Wong, would you like to speak on an item that's not on today's agenda? Hello, Alan? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners and Planning Commission. Just to note, I did put in a resignation for my position appointment on the Planning Commission. Just sharing that it's been such an honor and privilege to join in this public process. The forum and the meetings that I went to, just commend the staff, their preparation, all the agendas and the items and the planning that went into the meeting, just excellent, and the engagement and the patience and the respect that the Planning Commissioners had for each other and the public. I just commend the whole process and I'm very proud to be a part of this process. So God bless you all and wish you the best.
That's all?
Yes, no other speakers on Zoom.
All righty. Moving on to item four, it's the public hearing. We're 370 Adrian Road. It's a public hearing to discover... I can't talk tonight. A public hearing to consider the abandonment of a nonconforming use of 370 Adrian Road zoned retail commercial in the Millbury Station area specific plan. A determination of the status of a nonconforming land use is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15061B3 because the decision before the Planning Commission does not constitute a project and it can be determined with certainty that the action will have no significant effect on the environment. Before we get started, I need to read this part here. Our next item is number four, Public Hearing 370 Adrian Road. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, meaning the Planning Commission is acting in a judicial capacity to determine the facts and apply the law. Because of that, the city attorney will be presenting... representing city staff and the Planning Commission has separate legal counsel, Ms. Joanne Tran, advising us on procedural and legal matters. California law requires a separation of these two roles in order to preserve the property owner's due process. Are we... Is everybody where they're supposed to be? Okay, good. Before we begin, I'm going to outline the procedures for this hearing. As this is a quasi-judicial matter, the Planning Commission must base its decision solely on the evidence in the record, including staff reports, exhibits, testimony presented tonight, and any written materials submitted prior to or during the hearing. The order of the presentation will be as follows. City staff will present the staff report and evidence. The property owner and his attorneys will then represent their case. Commissioners may ask questions of either party. The public hearing will then be open for public comment. After public testimony, both sides will have an opportunity for rebuttal. The Commission will then close the hearing, deliberate, and make a decision. Before proceeding, any ex parte communications or site visits should be disclosed. Commissioners, have you have anything to disclose? No?
No.
No, and no, and no. There's nothing?
No.
No site visits, no conversations, no other kind of communications with either party? So the next up is the city staff report.
Good evening, Chair Davis, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's item is a public hearing to consider the abandonment of a nonconforming use at 370 Adrian Road zoned in the Millbury Station area specific plan. Property in question is at 370 Adrian Road and the current zoning is retail commercial, see Millbury Station area specific. Warehouse and distribution at 370 Adrian Road is currently a nonconforming use, a use that was authorized at the time it was established but is no longer allowed. The municipal code, Section 10.05.2420, specifies that if a nonconforming use is wholly discontinued for a period of 90 days, such use shall be deemed to have been abandoned and all future uses shall comply with the regulations of the particular district. This is the question before you this evening. Next slide. So the property, the subject property is located 370 Adrian Road. You can see where it is here on the screen before you on the zoning map, retail commercial. Next slide. An aerial view in the next slide shows the outline of the property boundary is adjacent to the southbound on-ramp to Highway 101, is just a short distance from the southerly city limits adjacent to the city of Burlingame. Next slide, please. These photos were taken today by our staff. You can see Lucid Motors, which is a car dealership across the street, using the subject property today. You can see the vehicles stored on the property, filling the loading docks. Pictures were taken midday today. So zoning and land use background, in March 2016, the city amended and adopted a new Millbury Station area specific plan that took effect in March 2016. Upon adoption of the MSASP, zoning for 370 Adrian Road changed from industrial to retail commercial. Been that way since 2016. So since adoption, warehouse and distribution uses are no longer permitted in the regional commercial zoning district. Warehouse and distribution at 370 Adrian Road became a nonconforming use at that time, which is a use that was authorized at the time it was established but is no longer Some background on the Millbury Station area specific plan. The retail center designation policy was established in the MSASP. It was identified, the retail center zoning was identified to the existing retail center, which is called Wilson Plaza, to retain the commercial character extended farther to east to provide additional retail shopping services and dining opportunities appropriate for the freeway proximate area. That was the, that was the policy identified in the specific plan. Next slide. So to frame the condition of the Planning Commission this evening, the question before the Commission tonight is to consider the evidence and make findings to determine the status of the nonconforming use at 370 Adrian Road. Tonight, the Planning Commission will consider the question in a quasi-judicial capacity. The Planning Commission's determination this evening is appealable to the city council. So some history, some analysis. Better For You Breakfast, which was a company that was acquired by Revolution Foods, and Better For You Breakfast, Revolution Foods is doing businesses Better For You Breakfast. They were the leaseholder on the property. They vacated the property in June 2023. Their lease ran through June 2024, so they started moving out of the site in 2023. That is identified in the documentation in your packet this evening. Lucid Motors began a month-to-month lease for vehicle parking in July 2024. That lease continues today as evidenced by the photos we just showed in the prior slide. The city is the water utility, the city of Millbury, and the city registered zero water use on the property between October 2023 and February 2025, as been documented and identified in your attachments. Ocean View Marine Products, following the departure of Better For You Breakfast, Better For You Meals, Revolution Foods, applied for a business license in October 2024, but no license was issued because their application was not completed and no inspections were requested by the city. The city has building and fire perform inspections with business licenses for new businesses. That did not occur. Staff requested supporting documentation for Ocean View Marine Products to demonstrate an active business use. Invoices were provided to the city only recently on October 10th, 2025, which is in your packet as attachment seven. First of these invoices for Ocean View Marine Products is dated Thursday, November 28th, 2024, which is Thanksgiving Day. It is 150 days from July 1st, 2024, the day that Better For You Foods, Revolution Foods vacated the property. That time period exceeds the 90-day period identified in Millbury Municipal Code, Section Given the lack of water usage and the dates in these invoices, staff did not find that these seven transaction records provided constitute substantial evidence. In the slide before you, you can see a timeline of the events that I just described. In July 2023, when Revolution Foods, Better For You Foods, validated operations to San Lorenzo, California. Property had zero metered water usage on the property beginning in October 2023. In July 2024, Revolution Foods, Better For You Foods lease ended, Lucid Motors began leasing the property. It is at that time that the lapse of the nonconforming use began. That time period exceeded 90 days. And for the record, the documentation identifies that it extended for at least 150 days, if not longer. Those invoices provided, you can see the dates here. Some of them are on weekends for various time periods. The evidence provided by the property owner. Next slide, please. Since the departure of Revolution Foods, doing businesses Better For You Meals, on June 30th, 2024, no warehouse and distribution occurred on the property through September 28th, 2024, which is a 90-day period. Property owner and Ocean View Marine Products did not follow through in obtaining their business license. There's no evidence in the record demonstrating active business transactions or employment on the subject property until the first invoice identified on November 28th, 2024, which is 150 days after the prior tenant vacated the property. Next slide. And as we showed in our documentation, there was no metered water usage on the subject property during this period that Ocean View Marine Products claims to have been in operation. So throughout those invoice states that are identified in the prior slide, there was no water usage as identified in the attachment in your agenda packet. And during that time period, Lucid Motors, the car dealership across the street, had been using the subject property for parking cars. Parking of cars is not a warehouse and distribution use, and Lucid Motors is a legally operating automotive dealership across the street. Next slide. So the determination this evening, Millbury Municipal Code, Section 10.05.2420, specifies that if a nonconforming use is wholly discontinued for a period of 90 days, such use shall be deemed to have been abandoned and all future uses shall comply with the regulations of the particular district. Supporting documentation, including lease agreements, correspondence, and utility records, demonstrate the nonconforming warehouse and distribution use at the subject property had ceased operations for more than a 90-day period. Tonight's determination is limited to whether or not the nonconforming use was abandoned under the municipal code. If the property owner wishes to pursue this matter further, he has the option to pursue an amendment to the specific plan. That option is always available to applicants. That finds there is substantial evidence in the record demonstrating a clear period of disuse and a lack of business activity for a nonconforming warehouse and distribution use at 370 Adrian Road for longer than a 90-day period. That further finds that the property owner and Ocean View Marine Products demonstrated an intent to abandon the previous warehouse and distribution use by failing to respond to the city's multiple requests for inspection and consequently failing to obtain a business license. Next slide. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission review the report, consider the evidence, public testimony, and findings as presented, and adopt a resolution determining the abandonment of a nonconforming use at the subject property zone, retail commercial in the MSASP. I'll leave it at that. That concludes my presentation. I will be handing this over to our city attorney, Lori Lu. Lori Lou.
Thank you. Good evening commissioners. Just wanted to add a little bit of the legal context. Um, so as Mr. Morgensen said, um, the municipal code section ten point oh five point two four two zero specifies that a nonconforming use is wholly discontinued for ninety days. And if that happens, it shall be deemed to have been abandoned and all future uses shall comply with regulations of the particular district. So under the specific plan that was passed, the warehouse and distribution uses, related uses are no longer permitted. And the property is within the RC or retail commercial zone. So we believe that there is substantial evidence in the record, as has been presented, that shows that the nonconforming warehouse and distribution use at the subject property has been abandoned. And we have received the information that the property owner submitted and we do not believe that it rebutts that evidence. The property owner has, um, suggested some other potential solutions. However, those have not, uh, those are processes that haven't yet been followed. Um, he has not followed the property for, that's required for a rezoning. So, uh, right now, tonight, I want to emphasize to the commission that the commission cannot take action on a requested rezone. It's only within your purview to determine whether or not the use has been abandoned. Um, if the property owner would like to initiate a rezoning process, he has to follow municipal code section ten point oh five point two eight ten. And that can be initiated by three ways. Number one, the planning commission can file a resolution of intention with the city council. Number two, the, um, planning commission can file, um, excuse me, the first one is the commission, the city council can file a resolution of intention with the planning commission. Number two, the planning commission can file a resolution and intention. Or number three, the property owner can file a petition with the planning commission. So those are the requirements if the property owner would like to request a rezoning, but that is not what is before you tonight. Property owner has also suggested that the municipal code is too stringent and has made references to other cities. Well, the municipal code in Milbury is what applies and it's as written and it can't, that's not something that can be changed uh, tonight. Of course, there are processes for changing the, uh, municipal code and that must be done through adoption of an ordinance, as you know, uh, but that is also not before the commission tonight. So just want to reiterate that what is within the commission's purview is simply to determine whether or not there is substantial evidence that shows the use has been abandoned for at least ninety days.
Good evening. My first time. Good evening commissioners. Closer huh? Okay. Can you hear me now? Better? Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, speak to you tonight. Um, I want to first make it absolutely clear that my purpose here tonight is not adversarial. But to plead for a fair and reasonable consideration. My goal is aligned with the, um, vision for this city as you do. Um, the city planning department has made decisions on my property that I think are based on selective interpretation of events. And I think I feel unfair application of the code. The city's decisions severely impacted my rights, my property rights, and I think will lead to pretty serious problems for, for the property. And, uh, let me just start. I'm a first generation immigrant. I graduated from Berkeley and I worked, uh, at Price Waterhouse as a financial analyst for many years. I currently manage a small trucking company based in Oakland. So let me start by addressing some of the, um, items, um, in the city's planning commission agenda report that they submitted to you. Um, it, first, the, the city claims that Revolution Food possibly, uh, discontinued their occupancy as early as June twenty twenty three. And they show that by, uh, an email from, uh, a gentleman, Michael Thompson, uh, of Revolution Foods in their email attachments to you. Um, I do not know this person. I have never interacted with this person. My communications with the tenant started and continued to the end with Jackie DuVivier, who was the founder of Better For You and that's established the op- operation at, uh, three seventy Adrian. Better For You merged with Revolution Foods around two thousand twenty one. And the Better For You, uh, founding team joined Revolution Foods and became shareholders. I spoke to Jackie who has, who, uh, indicated that, um, Michael Thompson was a VP at Revolution Foods, but has since left the company. And please note that also his email that he sent to the city indicate no title and no official letterhead. And I have no, uh, idea how to evaluate that email. However, I have an email addressed to the planning commission by Jackie DuVivier, the founder of Better For You, that she sent me. I'd like to read part of it to you. As to the planning commission of the city of Milbury, um, this email serves to inform you that Revolution Foods was in full use and operating in the facility located at three seventy Adrian Road, Milbury, California until the end of our lease in June of two thousand twenty four. While we began to move to the East Bay a few months before the end of our lease, we continue to have some operations and employees reporting to the facility daily until June of two thousand twenty four. In order to keep the facility in full safe and secure use and keep loiterers away, we subleased the parking area to the back to Lucid, our neighbors from across the street. And she is currently still, uh, a shareholder at Revolution Food. I will submit that her emails for your record. And the second point that I'd like to address, uh, on, in the, um, planning commission agenda, um, that the city indicates that there is no provision in the municipal code to extend the ninety day limit. Well, I think the, the municipal, municipal code does not preclude the extension of time. In fact, cities offer extensions all the time on various projects. And I believe the longstanding legal principle of what is not forbidden is permitted should be the guiding principle here. And what the report omitted. So, um, I, what I want to also, uh, mention is the city omitted to mention and left out in their, uh, attachments that Assistant Planner, Ms. Jennifer Lynn, sent an email to me on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, whereby she stated, "Thank you for stopping by city hall today. Planning staff is in the process of preparing a letter for extending the nonconforming use at three seventy Adrian. I will send you the letter once it's available." So the city in the report did not mention that and did not include it in that, include that email that was sent to me. So, and I called Miss Lynn the following week and was told the staff is still working on the letter and will be sent once ready. I believe this is a clear indication that the ninety day limit from June twenty twenty four, it was extended. And the third item that I'd like to, uh, bring up is the city by its action acknowledged and accepted the application for planning action and zoning clearance from Ocean View on October ninth, two thousand twenty four. And approved their nonconforming use on October fifteenth. The city claims there was no evidence of business activity by pointing to the lack of water usage that is monitored through the city. But as I will explain in my following presentation, this is consistent. What the city did not mention and also left out in their attachments are the PG&E bills Ocean View provided from October two thousand twenty four through June two thousand twenty five. Ocean View maintained occupancy after they received nonconforming use approval from the city by the very fact that they established a PG&E utility account and continue to make payments. And the last item in that report, it says the city claims to have asked for documentation to demonstrate an active business activity during the time in question. But we did not provide any until October tenth, two thousand twenty five. That is not my recollection and record. During the, a meeting that we requested immediately after, uh, the July twenty four, two thousand twenty five denial notice, uh, we requested a meeting with Mr. Roscoe Metta and Ms. Lynn, during which we were trying to urge the city to reconsider evidence and we offer these documentation, but Mr. Metta showed no interest to receive this documentation. It was only after my current counsel, Mr. Mr. Glassstone, who suggested that we provide this documentation and he forwarded to the city attorney and director Andrew Morgensen back in August. Around August twenty, twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. So it's not quite accurate that we didn't provide until October tenth. That, the documentation of PG&E bills and invoices were provided to, uh, to the city back in August. I'd like to put forth the following explanation of continuous nonconforming use at three seventy. The Revolution Foods informed me in two thousand twenty three that they did not uh, intend to renew the lease when it, uh, expires at the end of, uh, June twenty twenty four. So after a long and intensive marketing, uh, we found a tenant, Ocean View, and started a lease negotiation with them around July, August of twenty twenty four. Um, we actually signed a lease in the, in mid-August, but the owners were traveling in Asia to visit clients and, uh, but, and they never fully executed the lease by making a payment. So I actually, uh, went to the city and met with Ms. Jennifer Lynn and explained the situation and asked for, uh, more time for the tenant to start. And, and she emailed me, as I mentioned in my point two, on September twenty sixth, stating that the planning staff is in the process of preparing a letter for extending the nonconforming use. So before they, uh, before I received that letter, the, oh, the owners of Ocean View came back and I notified Ms. Lynn on October eighth. And Ms. Lynn instructed the tenant to, uh, contact her and uh, submit the, uh, planning action and zoning clearance applications, which Ocean View, the tenant did on October ninth. The city, uh, uh, and the city approved and Ms. Lynn, um, emailed the zoning clearance approval of nonconforming use to Ocean View on October fifteen, twenty twenty four. So Ocean View is a seafood processing and distribution company based in San Diego with more than thirty five years. They have, they started, uh, distributing, uh, their products in the Bay Area and with a growing clientele and they want to establish a branch in the Bay Area. So after the a- approval from the city of a nonconforming use, they submitted the li- the business license application, um, and started to move their products uh, into three seventy Adrian Road. But I, I don't understand the process, but according to them, seafood processing is a very specialized process. So they, that's assigned one of their employees, uh, from, uh, San Diego to come up to set up the operation. That's, that was their plan. But, uh, unexpectedly, that, that employee left in December of two thousand twenty four. And they were left, uh, stranded and they could not find the qualified, uh, staff to, to set up the operation. Um, Ocean View received an email from, uh, the business license, the department on December thirtieth, twenty twenty four, informing them that, that they needed to contact the Milbury Fire Department for, uh, an inspection to finalize the business license. And the owner of Ocean View contacted the fire department, but was told that all the operation, the equipment and the personnel need to be in place before a compliance can be determined. And they were told to call back when they're in full operation. And this was at the end of December, uh, January, uh, you know, beginning of January, uh, that was the, the contact they had with, with, uh, the fire department. So Ocean View, because they weren't able to set up their, their, uh, seafood processing operation, continued their operation with uh, only product distribution from three seventy Adrian Road throughout two thousand twenty four and two thousand twenty five, while trying to find solution to their staffing problem. The city's assertion of no business activity based on lack of water usage is not accurate. The lack of a significant water usage is entirely consistent with a facility that has not started any processing activity and only had distribution. Ocean View established their PG&E account after their approval of nonconforming use as evidenced by their ongoing PG&E bills starting from October twenty twenty four, along with the sales invoices submitted to the city in August of twenty twenty five. And in the beginning, in the early two thousand twenty five, Ocean View expressed their continued difficulties to fully operate the Milbury facility to me and asked if I had some, any, any, uh, uh, possible solution. Um, so I, um, engaged with my, uh, brokers at Colliers International and to start, to, to try to find, uh, maybe perhaps, uh, sublease or, or some other option. And the brokers were able to identify a buyer, J C Kitchen, that was interested in expanding their family business in South San Francisco because the existing, excuse me, um, build outs at Adrian would require minimal, uh, improvements for them. So we enter a purchase agreement that was set to close escrow in mid-July. So per the instructions from, uh, Ms. Lynn, J C Kitchen submitted the same application, uh, planning app- application for, uh, action and zoning clearance on July the third, two thousand twenty five. There were continuing communications between Ms. Lynn and J C Kitchen over details of building color and signage. As far as all parties were concerned, there was no issue of occupancy compliance. And then abruptly on July twenty fourth, Ms. Lynn informed And then abruptly on July twenty fourth, Miss Lynn informed us the nonconforming use was denied. We were all shocked. I notified the tenant Ocean View of this this news and they were also in shock and they send an email to the city, a letter to the city, which I will read in part. Dear Mr. Morgensen, I'm the owner of Ocean View Products based in San Diego, California. Our company started negotiating a lease for the building at three seventy Adrian Road in August of twenty twenty four with a start date, lease date of September first, two thousand twenty four. I was traveling in Asia and South America during this time and opened my and upon my return, I submitted an application to the city for zoning clearance. Thank you. Allergy. Thank you. I was traveling in Asia and South America during this time and upon my return, I submitted an application to the city zoning clearance on October tenth, per instructions from Millbury Assistant Planner to formally establish our operation in Millbury. Our proposed use is the processing of of marine products and storage and distribution. The location would be desirable because of the existing food processing infrastructure and this enables us to finally have a local branch to serve our growing client base in the Bay Area. We received the zoning clearance via email on October fifteenth. To the best of our knowledge, Ocean View Marine Products was approved by the city of Millbury to operate at this location and there has been no communication to us from the city of Millbury to the contrary. Our landlord informs us that he received an email from city manager on August fourth, telling him that our use was no longer legal because it had been abandoned for more than ninety days. That is factually incorrect as we have been storing and distributing products at this facility throughout our lease term. The food processing portion of our business did not work work out as we could not get our employees knowledgeable in setting up processing to move to the Bay Area. Our company, our occupancy, excuse me, is is evidenced by the sales invoices and utility bills we provided to the landlord. As there was no profiting of any kind, our water usage was minimal. Upon receiving this news, we were shocked. What is the operational status of Ocean View? So that was the 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 letter they sent the owners of Ocean View sent to me. So we have repeatedly urged the city to reconsider all the evidence of occupancy, but they have chosen to ignore our explanations and evidence contrary to their to their assertions. I'm here tonight to ask the planning commission to please consider all the facts, the evidence in support of our continuing nonconforming use. I want to add a little more context to my association with this property. I live in this area and really love to see how it can, if this area will thrive. I acquired three to seventy Adrian Road in two thousand nine, fifteen years ago, with the hope of developing this to a more valuable property. I initiated a hotel development discussion with the then mayor Wayne Lee back in March two thousand fourteen. Mayor Lee referred me to the city, the then city manager Maureen or I'm sorry, Marsha Rains. Our meeting was, you know, uneventful, but she also informed me that I had only two days to submit a development proposal package to the planning commission, which was not possible. It was a short notice. But I continue to explore that path in the following years and I have engaged discussion with no no less than five architectural firms to work on this idea of bringing, developing a hotel at this site. I've also pitched this to a couple of hotel operators and those discussions did not lead to anything fruitful. And as recently as two thousand twenty three, I partnered up with an experienced hotel developer who had worked for Marriott and Hilton for more than thirty five years to try and bring a hotel to the site. We hire an architecture firm designated by Marriott and Hilton to begin the design process. I submitted and paid for an application for planning action on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, along with conceptual plans and proposals to the city of Millbury. However, after discussions with builders and engineers regarding the 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 development of this project, I was shocked at the level of cost that had risen for a development of this project. The cost was just astronomical. Unfortunately, after fifteen years of planning and more than two hundred thousand dollars spent on consultants and architects, I came to the painful and disappointing conclusion that, given the high cost of construction and more importantly, a fundamental shift in business traveling during and after the pandemic, that is probably currently unfeasible. More importantly, it is impossible currently to secure any funding to develop such a project, given the high cost and the lower occupancy and average daily rate on the peninsula for hotel in this category. So I and I also explore other zoning options allowed under the MSASP, which indicates a retail development. Unfortunately, that does not seem viable either. My parcel is located at the end of the block at the Millbury one oh one southbound freeway entrance, as you saw earlier in the in the in the slides. It is unfortunately grouped together during the formulation of the MSASP plan together with the the existing retail center that had been there for decades and identify that that as a retail commercial zoning. The reality is I, you know, if you're familiar with that area, you'll notice the building structure of the existing retail center and the location of my lot. The existing building structure completely blocked off any visibility and access to my to my parcel. There can be no traffic flow from the retail center and the and the and and visibility. So we hired consultants and and brokers who were specialized in retail tenancy. Their conclusion was that, given the high cost of a retail development and the difficulty of attracting tenants due to lack of visibility and access and access, this is not feasible currently. And again, I want to I want to reiterate that I purchased this property specifically with the intention of developing it to a better, higher use. But after spending all that time and 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 resources, conclusion is currently that's not feasible. And we've and I've retained Colliers International to try to market this property, both for lease and for sale for more than two and a half years. And the only two parties that have expressed any interest is Ocean View and J C Kitchen. No developers have shown any interest. And J C Kitchen offers, I think, the best option for three seventy Adrian at this time. They are a successful family business, providing crucial services and employment for our community. And I would like to invite my my broker to give a little background on the current condition of the the commercial property in in our area. They've had extensive experience to give a little bit of context.
Okay, thank you. You can come up.
Hear me? So I'll I'll be somewhat brief, but to kind of echo what what Ed has said. And and outside of the fact that, you know, we're well aware of occupancy and continuation of occupancy as brokers, we do it all over the peninsula. So we always get ahead of it when it comes to marketing properties, et cetera. And so we always ensure that Ed has a tenant in place and do it well in advance. So I'm not going to rehash the ninety days and the inconsistencies between what we provide as well as the city, but from, you know, a thousand foot view, Ed bought this in two thousand and nine, the food facility. So I've been involved with this since two thousand and two, when Sky Chefs developed it and they put in, God knows how much money to do it as a USDA facility. Since then, it leased it to Casa Sanchez, who was the chips and salsa maker. They moved to the East Bay, so it's kind of an incubator space for these food companies. After that, it was Better Few Breakfast, bought by Revolution Foods, followed by Ocean Marine. And, you know, in the past, we presented Ed multiple offers to sell this building to a to a food company. He's always kind of rejected those with a higher and grander vision of developing the site. And I won't repeat what he said, but unfortunately, due to the site size, it being a triangle and 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 the limited uses, at least at least what we have now, we got retail and we have hotel. Retail, single story, it has no highway frontage, it backs up the existing retail center, so no visibility whatsoever. It just doesn't pencil, it never has. Hotel development, Ed can speak to more of that than I can, but I did talk to my hotel expert and he said that that's not a developable site, not now. Three, four years ago, I don't know. Ed went through that process and it wasn't economically viable. And again, that has to do with the shape of the property and the size and the cost. It just doesn't pencil, it's not economically viable. You know, I would say, you know, if it was three, four years ago, what you guys did with the Millbury Station Plan, beautiful project, the Gateway Project, you know, you have life science, multifamily, those kind of things. That was on fire three, four years ago. You know, now life science is thirty, forty percent vacant on the peninsula. Hotels are suffering, multifamily was never allowed. So that wasn't even option. We explored, we went to market the space for sale or lease. When we did do it, as as it was evident that, you know, Ocean View was trying to figure out their situation on coming up to producing the the seafood there and really building out the space and they said they were having issues there. Immediately I said, Ed, we got to get ahead of this for a continuation of use. We marketed for sale. So before we went to sale, my partner JP and I went out to, I think our list is like a thousand developers in the Bay Area regionally. And it was anywhere from hotel developers, we included life science and all that as well, even though it's not zoned for that. We got no feedback from anyone at all. I spoke personally to people. The only groups that we got feedback from was food related uses, right? So we ended up going to the open market. Food related loose uses, Kitchen, my other associate was able to find. And and unfortunately, the other investors that were interested were groups like Prologis that would take it and re-lease it to a food tenant. Issue is, again, the shape of the lot, the size of the lot, it's elevated, so it has dock high platform. You can't even convert it. At one point, before we, you know, found J C, we were even talking to Lucid Motors. So I think there was inconsistencies there on when Lucid started. Lucid actually started two years ago and they subleased it. It was subleased to it was Better Few Breakfast was winding down their operations. We were marketing the place in advance to continue the use, we're well aware of that. And there were homeless people living in the doorway. There was trash everywhere. It was a nightmare. So they came to Ed and said, hey, look, Lucid's across the street, they're banging on our door. Can we do an agreement to have overflow parking? Ed said, sure, we did a licensing agreement, it's be canceled ninety days. And they may cancel at any point, we don't know at this time. They've opened something in San Jose now. The bigger facility, right now it's overflow parking, but that's kind of kept issues away. Kind of from a holistic view, from a city perspective, if this building goes dark, and again, we have evidence saying that there's nine days of continuation, but it's, there'll be issues. It's going to be mothballed, right? Because you can't convert it to anything else and it's not developable. We talked to Lucid about, hey, would you guys like to take this site? And they said, can't use it. You'd have to demo the whole thing because again, it's dock hate, there's there's no grade level loading. Ear height is low, it's a food facility at the end of the day. So in the future, could it be life science and that bounce back if it's maybe hotels at some point way in the future when that turns around or or multifamily, great. But right now, it's just, it's just not feasible, unfortunately. And again, Ed bought this site because it's next to the shopping center. It makes sense and I get with the plan, hey, it's a developable site, that's why he bought it. And he's turned down offers, I won't I won't name prices, but from food tenants because he had a grander operation of doing a hotel thing, which didn't pan out. Right now, we were in contract with Jesus at a at a much lower price because Ed was just kind of threw his hands up in the air and said, you know what? It's, I can't develop this now, there's, there's a guy that's a burden hand, I need to continue with the use. And we found J C Kitchen to purchase the property. So again, you know, it's size shake, economic viability. I know we can't change the code, but I would recommend regardless of how this outcome turns out to really open up the zoning because a hotel is not going to go there anytime soon, maybe never, and it'd never be retail. You could demo it and make it as parking, but that'll go back to the bank. So that's just something to consider for the future. Lucid, again, we went to them to buy the building, it doesn't work for them, they're just using his overflow parket, parking. Better For You Breakfast, again, they came in, I was kind of talking off the cuff, but they came in and thank God Lucid came in because we're having homeless issues and trash. And, you know, again, we're not sure how long Lucid's going to stay. They have a ninety day out clause and they've been back and forth on how long they're going to stay. So I I don't know if it will would be abandoned or not. But next up, I want to introduce Jesus with J C Kitchen. They're headquartered in South San Francisco, they own their building, his father started the company, I'll let him kind of talk about that. But this is an expansion site for them. So, you know, they're currently about fifteen thousand now, this is about twenty thousand square feet. The reason he liked the building is because of the existing infrastructure, right? So it's not a heavy lift for him, there's already coolers in there, there's processing facilities, a bunch of parking. So what he had proposed and submitted to the city, again, with these applications, there were no indications that this was an issue. They just simply asked, you know, what are you going to paint the building? What does the signage look like? We kind of got done with it, so we were shocked when there was a kind of a denial here. But he's going to paint the outside of the building and refurbish the inside. It's already got the infrastructure. So there's not going to be a heavy, you know, infrastructure hall here or capital improvement hall. The reason I mention this is because it's obvious the city's interested in this being something else, which is what Ed Kwan wanted from from day one. And is this going to be the same thing ten years from now? I hope not. I I don't know. I mean, if the zoning changes and to a different use, then maybe it can be developed. But that is the goal to develop it. Jesus is a businessman, they already have one location, there's no ties to this facility. He's a processing company, they cut fruits and vegetables, package them and send them out with very little impact. They they service the airport, they'll kind of let them get into all that, but it's a, it's a pretty light but consistent use. And he's a businessman. If things change five, ten years from now and someone writes him a big check, he'll gladly sell and move on. And that was what Ed wanted to do and Ed will probably be kicking himself, you know, ten years from now, but he can't hold on to the property, he's not a user. And one last thing to to note too is with, you know, leasing the property versus selling the property. Jesus, if Jesus owns the property, he can sell to a developer anytime when the time is right. So he can just turn off that switch, he can cut vegetables somewhere else and take a check. Find this because I think it's already set up. Whereas if you have an existing lease in place, it's, as you guys know, ten, fifteen years. You know, developer comes along, there might be a chance that, you know, there's a leasehold interest and you can't buy them out and it'll stay there. So the opportunity change would come through an owner user when the time's right. And that's how developments work, right? That we, I can't make it, the city can't make it. When the time is right and the zoning allows for it, that's how it happened in Millbury Station. Developer comes along, strokes them with a big check and moves on. So you guys know all that. Last thing I would state is you guys did a great job on the, you know, the Gateway Millbury Station. But this site's just a different location, scale and zoning and, you know, with abandonment, it it wouldn't be a good look for Millbury and and not good for the community. And and one last thing is from an industrial standpoint, there's only four industrial buildings in Millbury right now and it's like eighty five thousand square feet. And this is one of four buildings, it's all on the three hundred block of Adrian. The other side of the road where all that is, it's still zoned industrial, except for Ed's piece right there. It's either here or there. It's eighty five thousand square feet. Burlingame has four point one million square feet of industrial and that's just the neighboring city. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, but in Burlingame, you have retail next to industrial. You have life science next to industrial, office, hotels. If you look on Bay Shore Highway and and Rollins Road, you guys are all locals. You know how it's how it's mixed and integrated. office, hotels, if you look on Bay Shore Highway and Rollins Road, you guys are all locals, you know how it's mixed and integrated in. So I don't think it's a, it's a bad use, it's, it's, it's been that way for 25 years. It's continued occupancy with a great steward that I'll, that I'll pass on to next. So again, has nothing to do with the 90 days and how we've continued the use, because we're well aware of it. But just kind of thousand-foot view, I thought it was important. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, sorry, my voice is a little stuffy. Allergies earlier today. But yeah, I want to introduce myself, my name is Jesus Cabezas. And I'm speaking on behalf of JC Kitchen, which is, my parents started the company back in 89. The whole time they were, they were in South San Francisco and twice already. Started a 2,500 square foot facility to a 4,000, to 11, 12,000 square foot facility that we have now. For the last 10 years, we have been searching for another facility where we could move our operation or expand. It's been tough, because a lot of facilities are out there. My search, and in my search, this facility has been on my radar for, I could say, the last six years. And when it finally was up for sale, when we saw the announcement, I got excited. I contacted Davis, he gave me the rundown about the location. Kwan, he let me, the actual building itself, aside, and which, what, within the first five minutes of just standing there, I could already reimagine where all my machines and all my processing areas would be. The inventory would be, within the first five minutes, because the infrastructure was already there. Oh, sorry, because the infrastructure was already there. So with that excitement, I kind of contacted Mr. Davis to pursue the opportunity and see if we could, you know, work out a deal. Obviously, at this point, I, well, at that point, I was not aware about the non-conforming use or none of that stuff. I was just looking at a building to see if we could expand our operations there. And like Mr. Davis says, and I'm going to emphasize a little bit of what he touched with his confidence, his speech was that we have 35 years of experience. We employ roughly 60 employees at this moment and would be, you know, allowing them to transfer to Milbury, since we're our neighboring city. We're pretty proud of the reputation we've developed over the years. We basically, just to put this very clear, we are a raw production facility of vegetables and fruits. There's no cookie, there's no, there's no grease, there's no need for oil, there's, there's nothing. So our impact within how we could, you know, mess with, I don't know, I don't know the city order is here, but with noise or pollution or anything like that, it wouldn't be a problem if I was to come in, because like I said, it's all raw product. We're also committed to producing high-quality, locally sourced food products while we support all Bay Area farmers and suppliers and their families. From what I know, there's, there's only one other produce company here in Milbury, I think it's Deeds Produce. They've been here for a long time. So I feel in my case, you know, we can give the city of Milbury, I guess, another fresh choice, you could say. That was another, another one of the reasons why it would, it would be nice to expand over here. With that said, okay, so our move to Milbury would basically preserve and expand our current workforce, bring stable, well-paid jobs to the area. We offer training, career development opportunities for local advancement. With South San Francisco, we sponsor a lot of the football teams there. We, we donate to Samaritan House down here in the peninsula. I know that Milbury has a farmer's market every Saturday, I've attended it myself. I could be a, I could be a contributor to it as well. I could provide my own stand and just, you know, help out wherever I can, give advice to Milbury regarding that. At the end of the day, all that said, this, this building for us makes the most sense, just because of how Mr. Davis had emphasized that it's dock-high, meaning that we could, you know, back in our trucks, unload, everything would be basically turnkey. But at the end of the day, if, because I'm a businessman, if somebody was to come in in five, 10 years and say, hey, we want this property or this area for another use, then I'm all here. I'm not going to hold on to it just because it's already there. You know, I would, I would, I would make a business decision at that time. And if somebody wants to offer me something and I could make a profit over there, I could move somewhere else. So I'm not literally tied to it, but at this moment in time, it would help us grow our, our business to, to another level. So with that said, I appreciate the time and thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good evening Commissioner Brad Gladstone with the firm of Goldstein, Gelman, Alvestad, Gibson and Harris. I'm counsel to, you probably know. Oh, sorry, counsel to the ownership, as you probably know, let's see, I'll, I'll try to talk on this side. As was stated, there, there's a win-win scenario here to resolve this matter that would increase the likelihood that the lot in question will become a use that, that meets the development goals of your specific plan, that would be possible if the zoning provided more flexibility for the uses such as housing, office and R and D and life science could take place. That is the kind of zoning you gave all the facing lots on Adrian, it's called Employment Center, you'll see it on the drawing here. But what was done to give an RC zoning basically made my client's use into a non-conforming use. It would not have been had you zoned it the same as all the other late Adrian lots across the street. By the way, next slide please, there's a chart here indicating how many uses that can be conducted in the employment light industrial zone that can in the retail commercial zone, which is what you gave this lot. And, you know, more flexible uses means more quickly it will develop, more quickly the plan will be met and downtown will be improved. As you know, your staff has the burden of proof here and that means that your staff must show you substantial evidence before you adopt the staff resolution tonight. Thus, next slide please, substantial evidence, next, is the absence of conflicting evidence. And staff has to show you not only a 90-day vacancy period, but an intent to abandon. You've heard from my client of all the efforts he took and all the efforts Ocean View took, constantly in communication with your city staff, getting emails back from your city staff, responding to those emails. So I, I just don't know how your staff, which, which has said there's, there's a clear intent to abandon, could say that? Perhaps they're talking about the lease to Lucid across the street for parking and I will get to that later and indicate why that isn't an intent to abandon. So what you see before you now is a California Supreme Court case that binds other courts and administrative quasi-judicial decisions such as the one you were asked to make tonight. This case requires a showing of intent before a non-conforming use can be considered abandoned. You don't have to believe me, your resolution for adoption before you says that there must be substantial evidence. It also says that when you sign the resolution, you're agreeing that the use, use is not partially abandoned or temporarily abandoned. The resolution says that you must decide there is, quote, wholly discontinuance, unquote. Holy discontinuance, not partial, not someone in the process of moving in, not someone in the process of moving out, not someone in the process of getting in, moving some people in and still waiting for that business license. And it's appropriate that your code and your resolution puts the burden on a public entity here, like your staff, because this involves a loss to my client of up to 6.5 million, which is JC's proposed purchase price. If the building has no occupant, the land's value is only the land. Thus, this is a substantial property li, right of my client, it shouldn't be taken away lightly. This is particularly true that it shouldn't be treated lightly when your staff is relying on some very technical grounds about business licenses. And there, by the way, there's discrepancy in the record, the owner of the previous tenant revolution says they stayed until June 2024, your staff says they only stayed until June 2023. Your staff relies on an email that they went out to get from someone who's not an employee of Revolution. That email's not on Revolution's letterhead. On the other hand, my client has shown you and put into record a letter to you from the owner shareholder of Revolution on their letterhead, saying that they stayed until June of 2024. Who's correct? Well, there, there's a discrepancy. But when you sign and adopt that resolution tonight, you're basically saying there's no conflicting evidence, there's no discrepancy. Instead, there's substantial evidence in support of what the client's saying. So basically, you have to rely on an email that your staff obtained by going to a former employee of Revolution and asking that former employee what date it was that Revolution ceased to use the property. He came up with a date, a year from the date that the owner of Resolution is saying it ceased. So I, I just ask you to take into account that I don't think staff has shown you the substantial evidence. And your staff agrees that the owner, my client, has to have shown an intent to abandon. You've heard from him all his, time he spent talking to city staff, emails, all the time Ocean View spent, all the time and effort my client took to make sure that 90 days wouldn't expire. And by the way, why does staff attribute, the staff, staff is telling you the intent of the tenant is clearly to abandon. Well, sure, the tenant couldn't be there anymore. But why does staff attribute the intent of the tenant to the landlord? You know, that is not done under California law, the law of agency. In California, clearly says that, you know, a tenant can't speak for an owner, it's not the agent of the owner. Most cities don't, do not take applications from tenants unless the owner has written a letter of authorization to the tenant for the city to say this tenant is authorized to apply for a permit. The, the rights are in the hands of, of the owner. So just to remind you, before the city manager's termination email arrived last August, my client was in the process of selling the property to this gentleman, a case JC Kitchen. Your decision to support staff tonight, as I said before, would cause many millions of dollars of damage to my client. He spent many years trying to find a tenant or an owner-user. He finally found an owner-user, the owner-user is legitimate and would fit right in. It's been very hard to find a new tenant that fits the use. The space is small and you've heard about the problems with it. And you've heard that it'll be a long time before a developer wants to construct retail or housing. So your decision tonight to adopt the resolution really means that the building itself will be vacant for many years. A vacant property at, almost at a cul-de-sac, where there isn't much pedestrian, where there's an empty lot behind it that will be empty and homeless and other people will surely look at it. So your decision tonight must be carefully considered, considered also for what's best for the city and the immediate neighborhood. Again, if we show that a tenant was operating at less than full capacity, for example, it was phasing in, out of, of the relocation, it was phasing out, then the commission should not and cannot conclude that an industrial use had been, quote, wholly discontinued. Wholly discontinued is what your staff resolution asked you to vote. There's been a number of dates thrown out to you by my client, but really, there's two key periods where the 90-day period is talked about. What's most key is the time between when Better For You Breakfast Company, later called Resolution, completely left. Left completely, not started to move out. And you've heard from Revolution that it wasn't until end of June 2024. And then the other important thing is to look at when the new tenant, Ocean View, moved in and whether, you know, the, 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 the complete discontinuance by Revolution, you know, resulted in more than a 90-day period. Keep in mind, the September 1 of 2024 was the date that the JC Kitchen lease was signed and they immediately took actions to try to move in, as you have heard from them tonight. Your staff points out a lot that Ocean View was not able to get its business license within a 90-day period. But you've also heard in your, 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 your packages contained, an email from Ms. Lynn of planning staff saying, you're, you're getting an extension of time beyond the 90 days to, to get the business license. Your city attorney said, that's not possible, you know, the, the law, the law doesn't allow more than 90 days. Well, you know, your, your staff provided it, my clients relied on it, they spent money and reliance on it. They spent a time, a lot of time and reliance on it. And, you know, one can't say that that was inappropriate for them to do. And again, another key time period is the time between when Ocean moved, fully moved out and when, but for the city's notice of termination, JC Kitchen would have moved in. They would have moved in within a month or two of their signing their, their, their lease. Maybe a few more months, but of course, they wouldn't move in more than a small amount when they heard that moving in more would put them at risk, because the city had decided to terminate their use. Now, the city has made, made a big deal tonight about how the use changed to parking. And I think what they were trying to say is that the parking use means there was no longer an industrial use. And therefore, when you change to a use other than the industrial use, the industrial use is automatically abandoned and they think that's obviously true. But what you don't know is that it's not my client who leased to Lucid across the street. It, it, it was their, it was their sub-tenant. You know, again, can you attribute the actions of a tenant to my client? The tenant leased to, to Lucid. My, my client had no intent of making Lucid a permanent use, nor even a, a, a use that would be a principal use. As far as my client was concerned, that's an accessory use, that's a small use, that's a temporary use. That's a use that was put in just to prevent this portion of the city from being blighted by the fact that an empty parking lot behind my client's building, which faces another building, is a prime place for the homeless, for crime to be committed. another building is a prime place for the homeless, for crime to be committed. And you have to keep in mind that there wasn't entirely change of use of the lot. The lot, parking areas may have changed to a use, again, not one that my client intended. But the building did not change use. The building did not have someone like a retail parking operation, like the offices of Lucid, running retail out of the building. And Lucid did not run retail out of the parking lot. That was excess inventory. They would constantly move it in and out. So I don't think you should put much into staff position that where there was a completely, complete change of use to parking for the entire lot. It wasn't for the entire lot. Parking was not the main use, nor was it the non-conforming use. So it should not be taken into account. The non-conforming use, the primary use of the lot was still being rapidly put into use for an industrial use. And you've heard all the efforts and the time put in. I was really shocked to hear from staff tonight that the city sent a number of emails to my client or Ocean View, which were not responded to. And that clearly showed an intent to abandon. Well, I looked at those emails. Most of the emails were saying your fire department inspection hasn't been arranged yet. When are you going to arrange the fire department inspection? There were four of those emails. And, and yes, I don't think they were all responded to. And the reason they weren't responded to is that the planning department and fire department staff said to Ocean View, we can't come inspect until you're fully operational. Well, you know, Ocean View was trying to get fully operational. They were trying to import their employee from down south who would allow the food processing to begin. But because they were not fully operational, they couldn't, you know, respond to the fire department and say, yeah, we schedule it for a month from now. Should they have replied to all those emails about when are they going to allow the fire department? And maybe so. But you can understand, you know, why they didn't respond to each and every one. And for the city to say, that's the evidence, that no replies, that there was an intent to abandon is, is, is just a little far fetched, I think. Again, the legal issue is whether a tenant's decision to leave the location should be legally attributed to a landlord. Next slide, please. Well, you have on your screen California Civil Code Section 2295. And it describes what an agent is, an agency. And that section of the code is the foundational statute for the law of agency. And what, what the law indicates is that somebody is not an agent of a principal and cannot be deemed to be an agent of the principal when dealing with third parties, unless the principal has explicitly told, told third parties and the agent that the agent is acting on behalf of, of the principal. I, I just don't understand how the city could continue to say that it can attribute the tenant's decision to leave to a landlord. I don't see any legal support. They provided you in all their materials for that idea? It's not an idea your city really follows. Your city follows the law and practice of all, all other cities in that your city treats a use as running with the land. That is, owners may come and go, tenants may come and go. It's the intent of a property owner that must be shown. For example, your commission issues conditional use permits from time to time for uses right here. And when a tenant changes or when an ownership change, the use continues. The use runs with the land. Let's say there's a retail store, the ownership changes. The city does not terminate the retail use. The right belongs to the landlord and that right is vested, which means it is something that cannot be lightly taken away. Now, there are some exceptions to the rule that the use runs with the land. Okay, there are certain kinds of uses where the city will ask about the employment history, the good credit, the background of the operator, and those uses don't run with the land. Those include liquor licenses, sex shops, cannabis retail where allowed, and the like. Surely a food processor, you know, cutting, preparing vegetables and fruit in a completely enclosed building, not adjacent to any residential use, should not be in the same category of liquor licenses, sex shops and the like, whereby, you know, the, the, every new user has to be separately approved by your commission or by planning staff. It just doesn't happen, you don't do that, except for those special kind of uses which can contribute negatively to people around and to the city. They may attract crime and noise, et cetera, et cetera, typically liquor stores. The other thing I want to point out, and this, I'm sorry to, to go on so long, but this gets to the meat of the matter. Because I'm going to talk about an email from staff that tells my client that the non-conforming use has been extended. And another from the same staff person saying, your business license doesn't terminate until the middle of 2025, June 2025. Imagine you're getting an email from city staff, which I'll talk about in a minute, that says your, your business license doesn't terminate until June 30, 2025. Of course, you receive that and you think it's been issued. Then the other email, and again, from, it's from Ms. Lynn of staff says, and I'll read the wording in a minute, it talks about having extended the non-conforming use. So having received that, of course, Ocean View and my client would assume that, well, you know, zoning clearance that was given two months before that to Ocean View means that the non-conforming use has been extended and will continue through the use of Ocean, Ocean One. By the way, just a moment about, talking about precedent. You know, your planning commission is looked to by other people. You're not aware of it, but generative artificial intelligence programs can find all your resolutions, all your staff report, all staff documentation. And the software can even provide a good legal brief in, in support of a, a party comes to you wishing to close down a non-conforming use. So imagine that for a moment that the city has a street with two restaurants. And one restaurant started 50 years ago, but became non-conforming because the zoning changed to make it zoning that doesn't allow a restaurant. And so imagine a competing restaurant filing a complaint that the older restaurant should be shut down because there was a failure to renew a business license for more than 30 days. Perhaps the bookkeeper of the restaurant, the old restaurant forgot to renew it. Or, you know, the competing neighbor may find that the restaurant declared bankruptcy in the past and because of that shut down for more than 90 days. And that wasn't in the control of the owner. That wasn't the intent of the owner. Nonetheless, that competing restaurant may just look at that and say, well, not only was the business license not in, 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 you know, present for, for more than 90 days, but after the bankruptcy, that restaurant was closed for more than 90 days. So if someone comes to you with that, your commission would be forced to, well, it would have a hard decision. If, if precedent means anything, and surely members of the public will point to a decision tonight, find the resolution as precedent, the members of the public will say, hey, your commission is forced to terminate the use of that old restaurant, notwithstanding how many local fans the restaurant has, notwithstanding how long it's been there, and notwithstanding whether the property owner had an intent to abandon. Also imagine a case where the old restaurant is closed because the owner of it has passed away, but its location is still much desirable by people in Millbrae for a restaurant. Imagine that a new restaurant goes in and the new owner of it may take more than three months to be fully operational. It may take more than three months to get A B C licenses, which are hard. Its tenant improvements may take more than three months, so it won't be operating. And, you know, without being, being fully operational, your department, your fire department and your staff says there can't be any inspection. So that 90 days will easily pass. That means no business license. Again, imagine that a competing restaurant brings that to you and ask yourselves what, what you would do. The city staff to be consistent with its position tonight would have to send out a termination notice to the restaurant, even though the landlord, you know, which wasn't the restaurateur, never had an intent to abandon. And even though the tenant never had an intent to abandon, but rather something out of his control, bankruptcy forced him to close it down for more than 90 days. You should be aware that there are many legal non-conforming uses in your city, given how there have been many properties that have been affected by your rezonings over the past decade. Those properties affected by your rezonings have become non-conforming uses. It's likely many of those non-conforming uses enhance the city and have a number of fans. So please consider the consequences to local businesses of adopting a position tonight, one that competing restaurants and NIMBYs may quote in the future. If you adopt the position that the intent of an owner not to abandon, it has no bearing on whether there's an abandonment. And sooner or later, some business that is shut down by the city's position and perhaps by your resolution tonight setting a precedent, will challenge the termination in court. It wouldn't be unusual. Please now look at the third page of the city's attachment seven, attachment seven to their presentation to you. It also happens to be Exhibit B of my letter to you. Next slide, please. So first of all, on, on, on the screen is, 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 is an email from Jennifer Lim of your staff saying, quote, "Planning staff is in the process of preparing a letter for extending the non-conforming uses at 370 Adrian." It, it doesn't say it's in the process of giving you more time. It says, "We're in the process of sending you a letter which will be extending the non-conforming use." And then look at the city attorney attachment seven, Exhibit B of my letter. In that email, there's a statement from Jennifer Lynn of the city to my client that your use, your non-conforming use will end in June 2025. It says, quote, "Please see these, the attached zoning clearance approval," unquote. That email is dated October 15, 2024, and it discusses Ocean View. It does contain a reminder to also submit a door signage plan and to get that business license application. It does not say that the failure to, to obtain those two by a certain date will mean termination of the use that's already at a zoning clearance provided to my client in Ocean View. So given Ms. Lynn's email indicating that, you know, we, we, we are in the process of giving you a letter showing that the non-conforming use is extended, given that, you know, Ocean View and my client had every right to assume that the issuance of a business license was just a matter of, of time and a much less significant document and one whose non-issuance would not result in a notice of termination of use forever. You could see why Ocean View would feel that the license could wait until full operation, fully, fully operating the food processing. Ocean View and my client, as I said, did get emails from the, the city saying, please get that fire inspection, please get that fire inspection. Didn't respond, it didn't respond, knew it was premature to respond and perhaps called them and told them that, but they didn't respond to every email. And I'm not sure why the city puts so much emphasis on that. The parties just assumed those were friendly reminders. So given Ms. Lynn's email stating the zoning clearance had been obtained and given the email stating that the city is about to give them a letter stating there's an extension of non-conforming use, it, it's, it's reasonable for my clients and, and Ocean View to think that everything was taken care of. Again, there is an email from Jennifer Lynn of City Staff, and it is the fourth from last page of my Exhibit E. And it says, quote, "It is time for your City of Millbrae business license to be renewed. Your current license expires slash expired on June 30, 2025." That was a date that was many, many, many months after this email was sent. It was so confusing. And what a shock to have received an email later from the city manager saying, actually, your, your, your non-conforming use stopped in June of 2023 because I have an email that I went out to get from a former employee of Revolution saying that Revolution's use stopped in June of 2023. And the city manager said, when I, you count from June 2023 to 24, when Ocean View was engaged and moved in, the manager says, well, you know, that, that year, you surely, you breached that 90 day period. The city, why did the city accept the zoning clearance application from Ocean View and issue the zoning clearance? And why did it email that the letter to extend the non-conforming use was forthcoming? When, you know, the city manager was taking a position that, you know, there was no use that, you know, that no, there, there could not be an acceptance of a, of a zoning clearance because the use had expired a year before we submitted the acceptance for the zoning clearance. I mean, how peculiar is that, that, you know, your, your, your city manager is counting from June 2023 saying a use was abandoned for a year after that? When, when your city clerks accepted the application for non-conforming use to continue and issued a zoning clearance, what, what, that, that is so strange and confusing. And my clients and Ocean View relied on that email saying, your zoning clearance is approved. They relied on it by, they started, Ocean's, you started to move in, started to hire people. My client gave up the marketing for another tenant because it believed this tenant had been accepted and didn't have to worry anymore about the 90 day period expiring. by the way, the Jennifer Lim letter saying, your current license expires on June 30, 2025, doesn't say that, you know, what the consequences are. If that's not the case, and what the consequences are for, for, for not meeting deadlines. It simply says, email simply says, there's possible late charges. It does not say that a termination of use will be a consequence of, you know, you're not meeting any of the prescribed deadlines. So I just want to quote from Ocean View's letter, a portion of it that wasn't read into the record. Quote, "Our landlord informed us that he received an email from the city on August 4, 2025, telling him the use was no longer legal because it had been abandoned. That is factually incorrect. We have been storing and distributing products at this facility throughout the time that the city says the use was abandoned." I'm going to take a drink of water and then I'm going to be as quick as I can. And thank you for your patience. I just want to point out that this, this, want to point out that this policy that you can't get a business license until you have a fire inspection and the fire inspection can't occur until you're fully operational. And then, you know, creates kind of a catch 22. My client may not, Ocean View may not have wanted to be fully operational because it had not gotten that business license. So, I mean, catch 22 is creating, creating a problem that gets in the way of the solution thought by the party. Email from the city of August 4, 2025, stating that the use must terminate. As the non-conforming use ceased much earlier, a year earlier, actually, two years earlier, June of 2023, was shocking because, you know, well, if, 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 if the city was going to take, if the city had taken that position, again, why did it take in and issue the zoning clearance to Ocean View? There are two arms of the city that are not talking to each other. How can, you know, the city staff tell you that, you know, all their notifications have been adequate and that the client was fully informed of the deadlines and failed to meet those deadlines? I mean, really, that, that just seems to me really, really odd and probably not something that would, would, you know, lead to a vote that there's substantial evidence of intent to abandon. So again, I think what's really important is to note something that the city did not bring up tonight. The city told you tonight, it asked, it pointed you to billing invoices from, from, from Ocean View that we provided to you in the city. Pointed to the earliest invoices that we, we provided to you. What you should be looking at and we provided to you is the later invoices submitted by, that were, that were showing, showing shipment of Ocean View out of the facility. Those later invoices, again, you have them, were from June 2025. You know, the city just pointed out to you that the invoices were a year earlier. Yes, we sent you invoices from a year earlier. But the key is, we also sent you invoices showing shipping and a price as of June 2025. June 2025, let's assume the use stopped right there. Let's assume they moved out the next day, which didn't happen. You count June 2020, June 30, 2025 now, and isn't it November 30 that the use would expire on this lot? Oh, sorry. I was trying to say, isn't it, isn't it November, end of November, when you count 90 days from the end of June, July, August, November? So if you, if you really look at the fact that the shipping invoices you have, your shipping is late as June 2025, well, that 90 days of disuse of an industrial use won't really expire until the end of November. Okay, I will be as fast as I can. The, if you go to the slide where it says the definition of engaging in business in your code, in your code, section 705010, and I think you'll see it here, says that engaging in business means when you commence the business, commence. And it says, proof of it can be any evidence of engaging in a business and lists some things that are possible, but says others are acceptable. By the way, your business license webpage says, and I quote, "The business start date is the first day your business started operating in the City of Millbrae." Let me move through this more quickly. The, I talked about the upzoning of the area. I talked about how it would be fair for there to be initiation of a new rezoning. I talked about how that would enable a developer coming to J.C. Kitchen to offer a development that is currently feasible, which are, which includes right now residential, but not allowed on the lot. The, in conclusion, Millbrae provides only two exceptions to its 90-day rule for required upgrades and court ordered succession of business. Even of, even a tenant renovation, which is a voluntary upgrade, not a required one, will not pause the 90 days. Is that fair? By the way, those two exceptions deal with items beyond the owner's control. Well, a tenant abandoning is certainly beyond an owner's control. The, just including, excuse me. Forgive my length. We would appreciate a vote tonight not to adopt the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
It's a long night.
I know. That's okay.
And thank you very much for your time tonight. Again, I wanted to really make it clear that my purpose here tonight is not adversarial. I just want to plead for a reasonable and fair consideration of the facts, the evidence that we introduced that were left, left out in the city's presentation. And just again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah? Anybody want to take a break? 10 minutes? 10 minutes. My watch died. 8:57 will, 58. We'll come back at 9:10.
Where are we? Where's, I have too many lists here tonight. We are. Yes. All right, so we've heard from all the parties. The commissioners have any questions for any of the people you just heard from? Okay, Nathan, go first.
All right, well, thanks for taking the time to explain all the particulars and specifics of the case and laying all the facts out. I think for me, some of the things, the, some of the questions that I have that would help me make sense of the, the record. There are five things I have written down here. So the first is about the water use and the, that report. I would be interested to know what units the water use are in because that would help me understand, you know, whether incidental water use, like using the toilet, it would, would register something on the water meter. It seems very unlikely to me that no one would have ever used the toilet in two years. If, especially if Ocean View was using the facility to store and distribute goods out of. So that's one question that I have. Um, the second one is kind of the role of leases in establishing whether a use is being continued or not. Director Morgan Mogensen, in your picture of the timeline, I specifically saw that you noted that the, the discontinuation window began when Revolution Foods lease ended. So to me, that seems to imply that the, whether they were intending to leave the building or not before then, it seems that it would be logical, it would still be logical to start that when the lease ended. And so that makes me wonder if, when the new lease begins, you know, we, and we have these records of a, of a lease between the owner and Ocean View. Does that establish the intention to continue the use even if the new tenant hasn't moved in? The third thing that I was interested to know about was the, the role of Lucid here. The pictures that staff showed us in the presentation, it seems like Lucid was even using the loading dock portion of the facility to park the cars. It, it, it seems extremely unlikely to me that such use of the surface area could coexist with an active distribution use if trucks are coming in and out. So I think that, I would like to know more about, about that. And also, if Lucid signed the sublease with Revolution Food, the Foods, the previous tenant, who do they have the arrangement with now? You know, did, just, did that, was that contract just never renegotiated? And no one ever told them they could discontinue parking there? It seems like they, they're fine parking their, parking there. So I would like to know more about that. Like, what's the nature of, of their use of the property and how are they formally doing that? Oh, sorry, one more thing about the water use is the, whose name was on the bill. Staff, I think, noted in their, that the property owner was paying the, the, the water bill for the entire time that Ocean View was supposedly the tenant. Um, and so I would like to know a little bit more about why that's what was in the record. And then finally, sort of, I'm really unclear about when the, when and why the marketing to J C Kitchen began. Because it seems like the, all of the invoices that were provided to us from Ocean View show continuous use up until, you know, up until very recently. Um, and so if they were actively using the facility, like what sort of arran, arrangement was? Like, did they know that the owner was marking the property in an attempt to sell it? You know, the, um, the owner of J C Kitchen mentioned that he toured the facility, right? If Ocean View was using it at that time, like what was seen there at the time. And, you know, the last correspondence that we have from Ocean View where they sort of expressed surprise at their, that they were not using the facility, they mentioned wanting to terminate the lease with the owner immediately. And we saw that that lease ran through 2027. So, I, I mean, obviously owners can, 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 are free to do what they want with their property without necessarily consulting the tenant. But it seemed like, at least based on that correspondence, they were intending to, to operate there, continuing on. So these are sort of the things that I, that don't quite add up for me that are a little confusing in the facts that have been presented and would like more information about.
All right, I'm gonna go through your questions, point by point from up here if you don't mind. So the first question is about water use. It does, does the city's meter record usage? Yes, it, it records cubic feet. So you're gonna see it if somebody flushes the toilet, you're gonna have one, two, three, four. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna register on the meter. So the answer to the first question is yes. The, the water meter registered at zero as you noted in, in your exhibits. The next question on the timeline discontinuation window, you could bring that up, Joe? So you're, the timeline discontinuation window, and I'm gonna bring this slide up that she's bringing up at the moment. So, you know, I'm gonna talk a little bit on the second question that you had. The city does not typically get a copy of a lease. We don't see them. When people start their lease, when people break their lease, we don't, we don't know. Businesses do not tell us. So that's not something that is shared with cities. It's not, you know, it's not part of their, typically part of people's applications. But that's not something we would know unless they willingly gave us a copy of that lease. So we don't know. The window that you mentioned about the lapse of non-conforming use, and it shows it on this slide. You know, Revolution Better For You Foods, their lease ended July 2024. That is a fact that is documented. We have no documentation of Ocean View Marine being involved until they apply for a business license with the city. That was in October of 2024, when they applied for a business license. They did not follow through with that application. It was incomplete, it was inactive. That went through December 2024. That's 150 days. But just the first time period alone, just from the point of application, there's your 90-day period. So, right there, three months. July, August, September. That's your first non, that's a 90-day period right there. The next point. You talked about Lucid using the loading dock if they could coexist with the use. Well, Lucid has been parking cars on the property. They use the loading docks, those spaces are very wa, very long. So they're, they make, you know, tandem parking as you noted in the photograph we showed you earlier this evening. We did finally get a, a redacted copy of Lucid's lease from Mr. Gladstone just a few days ago. We did not need to enter it into the record. It does not provide any more information that you don't already have. That lease with Lucid, just, I'm gonna state this right now, the parking lease agreement made on the 28th day of June 2024, the effective date, buy-in between Edward Kwan and Saufun Chung as trustees of the Kwan and Chung 2022 Family Trust, licensor and Lucid Group USA Incorporated Delaware Corporation licensee. Very top of the lease, I'm just reading the very top of it. So it was with Mr. Kwan. So that lease is between Lucid and Mr. Kwan, based on the document Mr. Gladstone provided us. Just wanna state that for the record. So that's your next question. So that is who Lucid has a sublease. Could they coexist with use? I don't see how you could use a loading dock for, or move in and out as a warehouse distribution use if you're parking cars in the loading dock. So the next one, the water use on the bill, it is identified in attachment six. Call up attachment six. So first page of attachment six is the, the meter usage from the water department. And it's, it's zero for most of the months. In April 2025, there's an abnormal data point, it shows up as 200. We're not sure, we can't really speak to that. But every other month is zero through July 2025. So from, from August, I'm sorry, from October 2023 through February 26, 2025, the city water meter is zero every single month. Zero, no water usage whatsoever. The, the property owner provided PG&E power bills. But even a vacant building uses electricity. You have fire exits, you have, you know, alarms, you have smoke detectors, you have things that are electrified, even in a building that's not being used. However, water is a different utility because water demonstrates an active use with employees. Employees who are in the building, using the toilet, getting a drink. That demon, water usage demonstrates an active business use. Your next question was about J C Kitchen. You know, J C Kitchen came well after this time period. So if you look at the, if the timeline on your screen here, we're talking, you know, July 2025, just recently was J C Kitchen involved. So they're not a data point here when you make your determination of a nonconformity because that time period is much farther in the past. We're talking July 2024. But when J C Kitchen applied for that zoning clearance, I wanna make it very clear, we act on applications as staff. We do not actively monitor the land use status of properties. We don't go out there and keep track of everything. But we only do the research when an application comes in. Somebody applies, you know, we take it in for processing, and only from that point forward do we research it. So, so like I said, staff do not take an action until we get that application. But the action, the determination is, is what comes of that? Was a zoning clearance issued? Was a business license issued? It either was or it wasn't. There's no in-between. If staff sends you an email and says, yeah, we're working on it, we'll get back to you with a response. In this case, you know, the applicant referenced Jennifer's email, that's not an approval. We're working on it, it does not state there's an approval there. We never gave them an email indicating, oh, yes, it's approved. You either are approved or you are not. There is no in-between. In this case, they were not. The last question you had, I think, was, said you were surprised that they were not using the facility, the lease ran through 2027. That's what I wrote down, but if you wanna clarify that last one.
Yeah, but actually, before we move on to that, even in the attachment five of our packet, there is the email discussing, please see the attached zoning clearance approval for the, and then there was an invitation to ask for, to discuss what the proposed signage would be and then submit the business license application. So how does that zoning clearance approval, well, maybe you even have it on the timeline because I see.
October 15.
Yeah, so in October 2024. So if the zoning, even if there's no business license approved, if there's a zoning clearance approval, doesn't that mean that staff? New, so at that point, staff would have researched whether there was 90 days to, whether there was 90 days from when the previous?
No, because the zoning clearance is, is the land use legal or not? If you come to us with a zoning clearance and you say, oh, I have, let's say retail, staff is only looking at the code and saying that's either allowed or not allowed. We do not research an active business status through a zoning clearance. That is through a business license. So the zoning clearance is based on that prior, pre, before the 90-day window. But that 90-day window had lapsed. And so by that date, what is it, October 15th, it would have lapsed. The staff did not, did not note that. But the business license was not issued. And there, there was no, not, the non-conforming use had exceeded 90 days.
So why wasn't the zoning clearance approval in October of 2024 denied then? If it had lapsed to 90 days?
It was, it was denied. It was denied because that was a mistake. That's why we're here this evening.
Okay, um, all right. And then, okay, and then the last question I had, the, 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 maybe since it's about the timing of lease agreements, it's not, you know, as you mentioned earlier, it's not really something the city is overseeing. So maybe, you know, if the applicant wants to answer that, I, I guess I can hear more from them about the interaction between all the different parties involved. It was basically just like, seemed like Ocean View wanted to continue to use the facility, at least according to all the evidence that's been entered as to saying that they're in active use. And yet, they're at the same ti, the owners at the same time marketing to try to sell the pro, sell, sell the property to another person, to another business that, that the, they testified earlier, they went to visit the facility, all of that. And it just wasn't, it's, it's a little foggy for me, so that's why I wanted to know.
So, you know, when staff receives a zoning clearance, they have no, they're only as good as the information in front of them. And in this instance, it's pretty clear that Ocean View Foods was not using the property. So what they did is they, they just didn't use it. We have no documented evidence that they used this property. So when they came in, even past that night, that 150-day period, it's still questionable whether they even used the property. We do not, we, we do not have conclusive evidence and we don't, we don't have any, we don't have anything showing that they were actually running a warehouse and distribution business on this property. So that's why we're here tonight. It's that simple question is, was this, did this lapse, did this lapse of use exist? And it did, because we, they did not run a business at this property. There's no water usage, there's no evidence of employees on the property. We've got Lucid parking cars there. So we have adequate evidence, and I think any reasonable person could accept that as adequate to support the conclusion that Ocean View Marine Foods was not operating on this property.
And again, the, the, just having a lease to you does not constitute evidence of And again, the, the, just having a lease to you does not constitute evidence of wanting to continue use of that, of, of the property for that purpose?
A copy of a lease, but is the lease still active? I don't know.
Okay.
You know, did they cancel it? I don't know. What I base my, what we base our evidence on is, is this an active use? Is it clear? See. So. Leave it at that.
All right, thanks.
Were all your questions addressed? Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have a couple more. So I think this first one's for city or attorney advising the planning commission. How, how should we define or look at the term wholly discontinued nonconforming use? Is there a legal definition or is it up to our interpretation?
Cisson? It's up to your interpretation of the municipal code section, so. Oh, it's up to the commission's interpretation of what wholly discontinued means.
Okay. And for staff, is it true that only the business is fully operational? Can they seek a fire inspection and only then could they apply for a business license?
Not fully operational, but moved in.
Moved in?
And I'll, I'll give you an example. I had a, a business, I think they were a hair salon or something, and they called for an inspection for building and fire, and they went there and it was empty. No chairs, no mirrors, no sink, it's just an empty room. They said, well, call us back when you're, when you're set up. So they have to be set up.
And the business license can only, you can only apply for it after you're essentially set up and show that?
No, no, you can apply for it before, it's the inspection.
Okay, but how about the business license?
The business license you can apply for at any time.
Is it possible to apply for business license as soon as I have a lease or as soon as I have an intent?
As soon as you have a lease, yes. So you have to have a property owner's permission. The property owner has to be a signator to the business license.
But I have, there's no prerequisite beyond wanting to start that business for me to apply for business licenses, is there?
If the property owner authorizes you.
Okay.
Yes, and they do not have to have a lease to be authorized. It can be just a signature from the property owner.
Got you.
Licensing, yeah, I authorize this.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thank you.
I'm not sure where to start, so just gonna go in the order that I find them here. I think I just heard there's no definition of wholly discontinued, but what's in our own heads? Is that what I just heard?
Yes, it's defined by the planning commission.
Okay. So we have no definitions of vacant or abandoned either?
Not in the municipal code section.
Okay. So we don't know whether vacant, abandoned, whatever is activity, is a fully executed lease, is or is an ongoing concern? Basically, I mean, because it does sound like from what we've heard that an existing lease could be interpreted as activity. So Revolution could have been through June of 2020, or the end of June to 2024, right? So, but, well, but they weren't really hanging out there much. So were the activity, does it count? That's totally unclear. I don't know if that's a question, but that's a concern. The lack of the water meter, to Nathan's point, I mean, if anybody was using the restrooms, so it would show up. But if we have an anomaly at the 200 units out of nowhere, if that's an anomaly, why can't the zeros be an anomaly? I mean, where's the data? I mean, we, I, how do I trust this?
200 cubic feet of water is very similar to what you might fill a water truck to put water on a property to get rid of dust, for like dust control measures. So I can't give you any evidence, but it's my speculation that it could be someone filling up a water truck, because it's such a precise number. Very unusual to have a precise number of that type on a water meter.
Okay, but again, so this just, this isn't solid for me. It's, it's okay, but it's not.
I can't say every other month it's zero.
Not, but that's what I'm saying, but we had the, it's one anomaly, so it's like.
Yeah, and it may, it, we say it's a nominally, but.
Right, but maybe the zero, maybe the meter's broken. I mean, did anybody ever go check? When we've got a 000 for even three bills in a row, do we think, what happened there?
We've, we have water meters all the time that register zero, and we don't, there, that's not a reason to go out and check if it's broken.
Okay. On the flip side, the PG&E bill for Ocean View, the furthest one back was billed in November, but it had a previous balance, which means there was an October bill. And I'd like to know if there were any other bills prior to that.
I would defer to the.
Yeah, I mean, anybody who can answer that can answer that whenever the time is appropriate. It looks like Ocean View's lease started in around October of 2024. If, if we're saying the abandonment started at the end of Revolution's lease, at the end of June, July, August, September, we're talking, thank you. September 1st, September 1st would be in the 90 days of, of that. So if we're counting lease terms as a evidence of a business wanting to operate there, it was in the 90 days of the end of the previous lease. If leases aren't good enough, I wanna know what is good enough, because somebody also at one point mentioned intent. Does intent matter at all? Does that have any role in our ordinance?
Or do you wanna speak to that?
So to establish, and this is on behalf of staff, you know, Ms. Tran can, can advise you separately. But staff's position would be that you need both abandonment and intent to abandon. So you need both, and the, and staff's position is that the evidence shows that there was actual abandonment, as well as an intent to abandon, based on the lack of water usage and electricity and other factors.
Whose intent? We had businesses operating there, but we also have an owner. Did the, because it doesn't sound like the owner ever wanted the property to be vacant and abandoned.
So based on our research, the intent of a tenant can also be attributable to the owner. The property owner, his attorney did argue that, you know, it's not, it's not the case, but we, we have not seen any case law to dispute that assertion, that even if the owner didn't want to abandon, if the tenant exhibited an intent to abandon, that can be attributable under the statute.
And if an owner is trying really hard to get a new business in place that would continue that use, is it even possible within city rules and typical timelines of turning around all paperwork, can he even accomplish it if it was a transition between tenants? 90 days isn't a very long time to get somebody in and out, out and in, excuse me.
Sure, well, the property owner, if that was the case, the property owner could have contacted the city and explained that they were trying to get a new tenant in, and they, they still had an existing use that was legal, nonconforming. But the city staff's position is that the, the 90-day limit is not discretionary. In the statute, in the municipal code, it says the, the, it's, you shall be deemed to have been abandoned. So it's, the, the commission does not have discretion as to whether or not to extend that 90-day limit.
Okay, I'm, I'm not suggesting extending it, but I'm just trying to figure out how it is we determine the actual date of abandonment, and then when that 90 days starts ticking. That's what's hard here.
What, sorry, I, I don't know, I, I know how to interpret what abandonment means here. I, it sounds like it's up to me, and that's, for me, that's step one, and I'm having trouble defining that right now. And then, yes, the date.
And then I need a date?
Yes.
If Ocean View was working with the city to get a zoning approval, which I don't see how that is or isn't, I don't, if it's not related to the nonconforming use, then was that ever explained to anybody that, that was relevant? Why did we approve that in October of 2024 and wait until July of 2025? To say, oops, sorry, never mind, you can't do this thing anymore, I don't, I don't, where's the, where's the in-between?
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
So when someone applies for a zoning clearance, staff simply look and see if that land use is legal or not legal. When you apply within that 90-day period, we're going to give you an answer based on the status when you apply. So a zoning clearance determination is based on the date you apply. So if October is the 90-day date where they lapsed the first date, where they hit that 90-day period and they continued to not use the property after that date, that's what we've identified in the slide, got in front of you right here. So that October, that zoning clearance was right, right within the, was in the 90-day period when staff looked at it. But that also doesn't mean that you can carry on for the next year and not show any evidence of activity, because there is no evidence of activity. A zoning clearance itself is not evidence of activity of an active business use. Neither is a lease. A lease does not mean it's an active business use. A lease is simply a document between a property and, and the user, says, yeah, I'm gonna lease it. But we have businesses that break their lease all the time, we don't know, but they're not there. And so, you know, the zoning clearance is not evidence of an active use. It does not give, it's not, it's not evidence saying that, yeah, this property is actively being used. So that's why it's not a bearing to the, to the decision in your packet. It's just simply, was that a permitted use at the time of application?
Well, but I think you're arguing that it was already outside, but I'm not sure that it was, but I can't, because no one can give me a start date for abandonment.
Yeah, the start, well, and the start date we're saying is July 2024. That was the beginning when we saw no activity, and that has continued. It's been that way since. So the evidence that we have before you, like I said, we have evidence that I believe a reasonable person could accept as adequate to support the conclusion that this was a abandoned use.
So a water bill and what's, I know there was one.
A water bill, a lease from Lucid Motors.
And a lease, that.
And we also have, like I said, we have no evidence of, these invoices that we received clearly show a lapse of more than 90 days. They have 150-day lapse. The lease, the invoices that we received from the applicant are on holiday and weekends when you don't normally see business activity. They're PDFs that we received right before the, the agenda packet went out. So I can't speak to the, the credibility of those invoices. That's all we received. I mean, when we put this agenda packet together, all we received as evidence from the applicant, or from the property owner, were those invoices. We received nothing else. If a business truly had someone working on that property, I would have testimony. I would typically have more documentation than just seven invoices. I would have perhaps an employee come and say, yeah, I worked there from this date. I might have a time card, I might have, you know, some purchase orders from their purchasing department showing things were brought to serve the employees. I might have some kind of contract for labor on the site. I've got nothing, I got seven invoices. So I think that's a reasonable evidence to conclude that this was an abandoned use. We just don't have the evidence. We've asked for it, and before this hearing, when the agenda packet went out, we did not receive that evidence. And so the, what you're reviewing here, as you said, it's very thin.
I think it's thin on both sides, is my problem. And because I don't have definitions and dates, it makes it very hard. That's all I'm gonna say for now. Are there questions that, are there anything, all those questions, do the applicants wanna say anything? Okay, go ahead.
Again, thank you for your time tonight. Now, the first question relates to the water usage. From my understanding, because they were not set up to operate fully, it was used as a dead storage. So products shipped there, when they, that was, related to me, when there were orders, they would come and open up, pick up the products. Now, if you look at those invoices, those, if you look at the description, those are dry goods. Dry abalone, see cucumber, can. Those are, those are not solid-sized stuff. Those are expensive product, if you're, you know, familiar with the Asian culture. Those are very expensive product that do not take a huge truck to ship. And, and that's what I, what I was told. So they had boxes of these products, if you look at the invoices, that's what they were. So, and as to the Lucid parking, I may not have written down everything, so please remind me if I miss anything. The Lucid parking in the front are their employee parkings. You can clearly see those are not Lucid cars. But Lucid use the backside of the building as a storage for their vehicles. Now, the fact that Lucid started parking in those area really helped, even when Better For You were, were still there, to keep away all the unauthorized parking and, and, and a lot of, quite a few times, there were just encampment back there. So Luc, so Better For You brought them in just to, because they don't have an active operation on a regular basis at that point. As the, the former owner of, well, the, from Jackie, related to me, they had started to consolidate to the East Bay, but they still had daily employees inside, assigned to that facility. But they needed to make sure that the other areas outside of the building are not occupied by, you know, unauthorized party. So that's my understanding from talking to them. Now, as to the business license, it is absolutely true that fire department wanted to, well, in my experience, I own a business too. If they, if, if they, you know, the fire inspection needs to have equipment and personnel in place to, to verify compliance. So that's what the, the owner of Ocean View told me. They called, they called after they received that email on December 30th. Spoke to someone at Fire Millbrae, one of the fire marshal. He did not take down the name, because now we're looking back in time. I mean, at that time, a, you know, if, if you were just running your business, those were the information given to you, you know. Why didn't you, you know, be more active in following up? Because I guess, yeah, I can't speak to the owner, but my understanding is, she reached out and talked to them, and they said, wait, call us back when you're ready. Now, going back to the point that the city is making about the PG&E bills, I mean, that is not, not just light, lighting, you know, that amount is, is not a huge amount, but I think it's pretty consistent with coming and going, turning on lights. I mean, if it was all dark 24/7, you wouldn't have a bill of $700, $800 a month, I mean, on average. So it is not just, you know, lights and, and fire alarm that would generate, at least, that's my, my, you know, my understanding and my experience with my own warehouse in Oakland, right? That's how much we pay, and we don't have anything beyond, you know, just a warehouse in Oakland. So. So to address the issue of J.C. Kitchen, I think, as I mentioned in my presentation, at the beginning of this year, 2025, I wanna say February, March, thereabout, that's when. that's when Ocean View approached me and, and, and was just pretty frustrated and say, hey, you know, I'm just having trouble getting the right people to set up this processing operation. Do you have, can you find a sublease or any other, you know, option? That, at that point, that's when we started marketing for, looking for both a lease and a sale, while Ocean View continued to be in the facility to store. So I want to emphasize, they did not have a regular employee at the site. They had their storage of products because their real goal, their real operation is seafood processing. What they store at the facility were, you know, dry seafood, abalone, you know, sea cucumber, canned abalone. I mean, you look at the invoices, that's what they were. So that's the, that's my, you know, for my, what I can, what else did I miss? I think I wrote down so much, so much that I probably did not address all your question. If you could remind me what I missed. Right. And also, just going back to what Mr. Morgensen said just now, we, again, I mentioned at that early, the first meeting we requested back in July, after that denial of notice to J C Kitchen, we spent, my brokers and I tried to urge him to look at the, the evidence and we offer what documentation, all the documentation that we, we could, that we can bring to him. But he basically was not interested. He didn't want it. So it's not true that the city asked for it. It's Mr. Glassdome just forwarded to them, you know, after he took on the case. So we actually did offer those documentation very early on. And yet, you know, Mr. Meta, Roscoe Meta, basically said, you know, that's, I don't remember his exact words, but he, he was not interested. So please commissioners, if I, if there are other questions that I did not address, please remind me. Oh, by the way, also, I'm sorry. Regarding business license, whether a business is considered active only after a business license? I mean, until even recently, I think there were emails from the city, sent to Ocean View as recently as May or June, saying it's time to renew your business license. So what, if, if there was no active business license, how do you renew? There were multiple such emails. The, the problem, the issue goes back to we could not find, or they could not finalize their business license application because they were told by fire department that all the equipment and personnel need to be in place to verify compliance. That's, and, and they were not, they had, they had not been able to, in, you know, have equipment and personnel in place because as we explained, they did not have the person, the, the, the right person that knows how to set up seafood processing that they, that they were able to work with, to bring up to, to the Bay Area. So they did not call the fire department. And in the meantime, they were using the facility just as a dead storage for those high value marine products that they distribute from this location to customers, mostly probably all Asian markets in the Bay Area. I mean, you can look at those invoices, that's what they were. I, I think, I hope I addressed most of your question. If, you know, if you have any that I, that I can answer.
I, I had one. I, I guess I'm still a little confused about, you know, what Ocean View's relationship with this property was around the time that you signed the, or you found J C Kitchen to work out a purchase agreement. So in your testimony just now, you mentioned that they told you that they wanted to, that they probably, or my takeaway from what you were saying is that they told you that they didn't think they could set up a food process. They were having difficulty establishing a long-term processing facility there. And so they asked you to figure out a way to sublease or find out some other thing. That doesn't seem especially consistent with the letter that we received. This is the October 8th letter where I see language like, our landlord informed us that he received an email from the city manager telling him that our use was no longer legal. What is the operational status of Ocean View? After learning about the city's position, despite all of the evidence of continued city approved occupancy since October 2024, we demanded the landlord to terminate our lease immediately. That to me, at least just reading these words, it sounds like they were prepared to continue operating in Millbrae indefinitely. So it doesn't quite jive with what you're, what you just told us about.
Sure.
Going to vacate, intending to leave at some point.
Right. So our relationship as, you know, landlord and tenant had always been a very, very pleasant and friendly relationship. So when they told us, told me early on in 2025, I told them, yeah, okay, I'll start looking, ask my brokers to look. But of course, they're still obligated under the lease. And as any landlord, I will not release anybody unless there's a clear, you know, a reasonable way to continue the, you know, the financial side of, of a building. Think you, you know, you just cannot randomly or, or just say, okay, yeah, here, break the lease. Because that's, that's not something landlords would do unless they can find alternatives. So I, as I told Ocean View, we will start marketing it, both, you know, trying to find another occupant or if we could find a, 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 a user buyer that would take the building. So, and as of now even, they are still on a lease. They are, they've asked to break the lease, but, you know, from my position, I, I can't just say, okay, here you go. Let, let me, you know, just, just cancel the lease. So, so that, that's the situation. They, they wanted to break the lease once I informed them. Because, because, you know, back in July, I told them, hey, we got a buyer. So they were anticipating that they could leave when the, when, when the escrow closes in July and it was set to close in July. It's after when the city denied J C's non-conforming use application that I told them, and that's the letter that they came, you know, that sent me, that they, they wanted out. Because now they're in jeopardy, right? What, what's their status? They're still obligated to me for the lease financially. But if they can't operate, you know, we're gonna, I don't know how I'm going to resolve it with them, but legally, they are still on the lease. But they now, the question is, can they operate? If, if the city suddenly takes this stance? Even though Mr. Morgensen said staff are just, you know, processing based on the code. That is true that the, the city process, but they, it, it, you know, the, the, whether a business can establish is really begins by a, a use approval. Nobody applies for a business license before they can be certain that their use is approved by the city. So that actually, you know, the, the, the use application, my, my experience has been you have to be approved by the city for your particular use before you can even start thinking about setting up a business. And in this case, that's exactly what happened. They did apply a business license and was told that a fire inspection is needed to finalize that application and to call back when they are fully operational, which they couldn't. They, they didn't, they weren't able to do. And the city continued to send requests to renew the business license. So if a business license was not issued, why did the city continue to request a renewal? And that's my, you know, that's my understanding. So maybe the, maybe the city can address that better than I can.
Through the chair, could I ask cities to have to address that point?
So the city contracts business license processing with a company called H D L. They're based in Fresno. Their software sends out an automated email reminder to anyone who has put an email address into their system. Business licenses are renewed annually at the same time. So those are automated emails that everyone receives. It sends out automated emails. They were not, they are not evidence for the record that the city was communicating on this topic directly to the applicant. They're generic emails. It's just like any other department. I get automated emails about city events that, you know, all kinds of things all the time. I'm sure you do too. So I just want to speak to that.
I have a few, a few comments. I'll be much shorter than I was before, but these are, these are legal issues. First of all, Mr. Morgensen just said that a zoning clearance only dates what is allowed by zoning. And our zoning clearance only dates what the zoning allows. Well, that's not true. At the time the zoning clearance was given, industrial was not allowed. I don't know why Mr. Morgensen just said that zoning clearance says what the zoning allows. What, what zoning clearance must have been was a, a statement that, you know, you know, the non-conforming use continues, even though zoning doesn't allow it today. The person who wrote it must have had in mind that the non-conforming use was continuing when he gave the zoning clearance because he couldn't be saying, Mr. Morgensen, he couldn't be saying that the zoning allows your use. The zoning didn't allow zoning at the time the, the zoning clearance was given. I also want to mention a few things. I was listening closely to Mr. Morgensen and I wrote down some notes. In the last time spoke, you, he said, it's reasonable for staff to have assumed, a reasonable person would have assumed. And there are many words like that. I just wanted to remind you and the city attorney can remind you, it's in your resolution, that you have to find that there was substantial evidence in the record. And, you know, I'm not sure statements like, you know, it's reasonable for us to assume, it'd be reasonable for anybody to assume, given this and that. So remember, the burden is on the city. I was, you know, the city attorney told you a few minutes ago, they have not received judicial case citations from me that prove my points. Well, again, we haven't received judicial citations from the city attorney that proves their point. Remember, it's their burden, not ours, to show that the law doesn't support us and supports them. No, the, the, the case I mentioned in my brief of H H Armistead versus City of Los Angeles explicitly talks about how you cannot attribute the actions of a tenant to a landlord. And that I want to make sure goes in the record. I was accused of not providing the judicial citation. The, 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 the other point I wanted to make is that the, this, the, the letter, the email from the city manager was a revocation of a right granted of a statement that there was a zoning clearance. And I, again, I said, we had, we had to assume the zoning clearance meant the non-conforming use had approved. And it's how strange to have the letter eight months after, six months after from the city manager saying, you know, we revoked that decision. Non-conforming use wasn't approved. Non-conforming use couldn't be approved. My clients, the Ocean View relied on that. Just a couple of other things. The fact that Lucid used the docking is not inconsistent with there being no industrial use of the property. You've heard there was storage use when distribution stopped. There continued to be storage use. If there's storage and no distribution, people aren't using the loading docks. And remember, storage is an industrial use. As long as there was any industrial use of the property, there didn't have to be also distribution. Then there was a non-abandonment. And I've indicated the cases in judicial, the judicial, the cases indicating that abandonment has to be total abandonment. Your code says has to be wholly non-used, wholly storage. Can't say that the building was not wholly unused. And I think just one more point. Well, I think, I think I made them, thank you, thank you.
Chair Davis, I have one more question.
One more question? Okay, go for it.
So earlier it was mentioned that there was, there were, there was a second sublease agreement between Lucid and the property owner to enable the car, the, them to continue using the facility for parking. We didn't really discuss the terms of that lease, but I would love to know, you know, was there any language in there around how their use of the lot would coexist with a storage and distribution use? I mean, as we saw in the vote, as we saw in the photos earlier today, earlier in this meeting, like it didn't look like you could get anything in and out of, out of the building where, where the cars were situated. So I, I would just like to know if, if that parking arrangement precluded the ability for the facility to be used as a storage and distribution facility, then that doesn't make any sense to me.
I'm going to read the term of the lease into the record for you in the use section because we did not provide the printed copy. All right. So in section two of the lease that I mentioned earlier at the podium, use. The licensed area shall be dedicated to the exclusive use of licensee, its employees, customers, guests, invitees and visitors 24 hours a day, seven days a week for the purpose of storing electric vehicles and all lawful ancillary uses. Licenseur shall ensure that licensee has reasonable access to the licensed area at all times throughout the term and shall not allow any party other than licensee to use the licensed area. And that is what the lease says from between Lucid Motors and Edward Kwan and Saufon Chung as trustees of the Kwan and Chung 2022 Family Trust. So I want to state that for the record.
Is there any elaboration on what the licensed area was? Is there any explanation of what the licensed area was? Because earlier we heard that they were only using the back lot, but your photos indicate they were. but your photos indicate they were using more than the back lot.
I'm going to reprint the lease right now for the commission for the record since it's come up twice.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So the the licensed area are only for the parking area, not the building itself. So that that's the backside. There's a, there's actually a uh aerial view of wh- where it, you know, what areas are licensed to the parking. Now, again, I want to refer you to the invoices description. These are not huge products. If you ever s- you know, if you're not familiar, these can be, you know, hand trucked from the front. These are boxes of abalone, boxes of, you know, dry cucumbers. These are dry products that they store. I've seen it. I mean, it doesn't take a forklift to do it. I, you know, they can, they easily hand truck those stuff in and out from the front door. There's access from the front door with a double, double glass door. So that's my understanding, and I've seen the product in the, inside the warehouse. Those are high value, expensive products, but they don't take up the whole warehouse. The whole warehouse was intended and dedicated for actual seafood processing.
Thank you.
And my my brokers reminded me that license, that parking agreement has in a a night uh, two months, I think, 90 day termination uh that goes, that goes both way. They could terminate and I, so it's not a long term. It's really a stopgap that enable them to cover some of their, you know, their their overflow and a in a a way for 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 the previous tenant and for the, for me to prevent blight, you know, people occupying and throwing stuff all over the place. And that took, that did happen. So that's, that's just a temporary stopgap. And it's only for the exterior parking uh area. Um, so.
Thank you. When when did that sublease begin?
Um, it started with Better For You. I mean, the 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 email from from uh from Jackie stated that even they, you know, it started with them.
I'll I'll wait for the print, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up is public comment. We're going to open the public hearing now. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please give us a speaker slip or raise your hand on Zoom. Comments are usually limited to three minutes. Is there any hands or sleeps?
There are speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom.
All righty, seeing no further speakers, the public hearing is now closed. We should have a motion and a second to do that. Do I have those?
A motion.
Motion to close the public comment, public hearing.
Public hearing is now closed. Motion passes three zero.
All right, we're down to commission deliberation now. Wants to discuss? What, what, sorry? What?
Chair Davis.
Yeah.
We have rebuttals.
Rebutts to what? I thought that was rebuttal to public comment. We didn't have any.
Rebutts so that the parties can address any loss comments.
More, who 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 cities first? Any rebuttal? I'm looking at this. I ju- I just thought that was rebuttal to public comment. Not, because I thought we already rebutted everything that got said. But if there's more, please, we want more. Thank you. So city staff, well, this is staff, city staff or city attorney? Who wants to go first?
I believe city staff will go first.
Okay. You have five minutes in total, this side and that side.
If you could go to slide fourteen. So planning commission is basing their decision on the evidence before them this evening. There's been a lot of confusing testimony that was presented to you this evening. Testimony that was not backed up with records, testimony that was not backed up with documentation. Findings of fact are pretty clear. We know that Better For You Foods departed the property on June 30th, 2024. We know that no warehouse and distribution of use occurred since at least September 28th, 2024. That is the, that is a 90 day period with no activity. We know that the property owner in Ocean View Marine did not follow through in obtaining a business license from the city. They did not receive one. We have no evidence in the record demonstrating active business transactions or employment until the first invoice dated November 28th, 2024, which is 150 days. It happens to be Thanksgiving Day. Next slide. We know that there's no water meter usage on the property. We know that Lucid Motors had a month to month lease to use the property. And I quoted the use in that lease, which is now before you documented for the record off of this commission. They have been using the property for parking cars since June 2024. And the use of that lease shows them is exclusive to the property. Next slide. It's pretty clear in the municipal code that if you, if a nonconforming use is wholly discontinued for 90 days, it is deemed abandoned. The documentation that city staff has provided you, including lease agreements, correspondence and utility records clearly demonstrate the nonconforming warehouse and distribution use was ceased. It had ceased for more than a 90 day period. That is very clear. Next slide. Um, the decision before you is limited to whether or not the use was abandoned under the municipal code based on the documentation. It's not based on what somebody claims they heard from Ocean View tonight. It has to be documented. Documentation before you, very, very clear. Go to court, it's based on that documentation. We have documented that. I think our documentation as a city is very, very clear that this was abandoned. Property owner wants to pursue this as a, as a use, they have outlets to do that. There are other avenues for the property owner to go forward. They can come in and apply for a specific plan amendment. They can go that route. That is an option available to them. This is not the path forward for them to get to where they want. If they would like to continue using this as a warehouse and distribution use, make a request to the city to change the specific plan. That option is always available to them. They can do that right now. They could have done that in July 2024. Next slide. And so based on that, we find that there is substantial evidence in the record demonstrating a clear period of disuse of the property, lack of business activity. We also find that the property owner and Ocean View Marine Products demonstrated an intent to abandon the warehouse and distribution use by failing to respond to the business license requirements for inspection and failing to obtain that business license. Substantial evidence is not a lack of conflicting evidence. It is evidence a reasonable person could accept as adequate to support a conclusion. Does the evidence fairly support that our our conclusion is a city? Yes, it does. We don't actively monitor the land use status of properties. Um, and a zoning, a business license was not issued. Um, and so I think the evidence of the record is very clear tonight that this use was abandoned for 90 days, more than 90 days. So that's, that's our, that is our rebuttal this evening for the planning commission.
Thank you.
This, uh, Lori is going to speak next on the city attorney.
So Mr. Morgensen covered quite a bit of what I was also going to talk about. So um, just to reiterate, you know, the property owner is welcome to file a petition with the planning commission for rezoning or to seek to have the specific plan amended to permit the currently nonconforming warehouse and distribution uses. Um, that would be the path forward. That is not something that can be done tonight. The municipal code does not give discretion to the planning commission on the 90 day period. Uh, the language says that the, that the use shall, shall be deemed to have been abandoned. So as noted by the property owner, the exceptions do not apply. Um, and the property owner has acknowledged this, but asks, is this fair? And unfortunately, this isn't about fairness. This is about applying the municipal code, uh, which the planning commission has to do strictly. So as Mr. Morgensen said, substantial evidence does not mean the absence of conflicting evidence. It just means that the evidence weighs in favor of the findings. The property owner, um, not believe has submitted evidence sufficient to show that there is a current distribution use. Um, as noted, the, as correctly um noted by the commissioners, the parking and use of the loading docks, we believe is inconsistent with the use. It's not just about the expiration of the business license. There's other evidence that the city has offered to show that the use has been abandoned. So conclusion, we believe that the the, there is sufficient evidence for the planning commission to reasonably find that the use has been abandoned.
Thank you. Property owner, five minutes?
So let me first um pick your attention to the the lease that that was just submitted. And you'll notice only the red area were part of the the parking. Clearly, there's a path from the front door. That is not part of this sublease agreement. And I've seen those products being loaded from through that door. And again, I want to reiterate, these are high values, small size products that can be loaded with hand trucks. And secondly, Mr. Morgensen keeps referring to the first instance of the invoice being a Thanksgiving Day. And I like to s- remind him, he can go to any stores on Thanksgiving Day that are Chinese operated. We do not close for Thanksgiving. So his point of, he pointing to that seemed to suggest those are not, that date is in question. I just want to bring that up. And it's curious to me where, why the city only use uh the the, you know, only limiting the utility use to water. P G and E bill bills are clearly utilities. And to have $700, $800 of utility bills a month is consistent with a dead storage. It is not consistent with a dark warehouse. And to the point that the um, city attorney just made, that she quoted, she cited the 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 uh code. Now, we, the public can only rely on what information the city has provided us. So are we to not depend on what the city staff communicated to us through email that, yes, I'm preparing a letter of extension to you. It will be sent to you. You clearly saw that email. They keep, they kept. You know, they never addressed that email. Now, whether or not, yeah, you know, uh, that is a fact that we rely, we, the public, rely on that communication with the, with the city staff. How are we supposed to function in as pu- you know, public? If if we don't know what was communicated to us to be, to be reliable? So that's my point.
Thank you.
I believe I have, what, two minutes? Yeah.
Five minutes.
Oh, five minutes, thank you, okay. So I'd like to address um some of the comments from Mr. Morgan Stern.
It it's going to be now because Andrew took five. So I said, okay, then five for you, five for you, five for you, so five. Yeah, five if you want it. You don't have to.
I don't need it. Okay. So um, Mr. Morgan then had stated earlier tonight that there is no evidence of this use continuing, uh, industrial use continuing as late as June 2025. When I brought up and I showed you, and it's in your briefs, the June 2025 shipping invoice of Ocean View, that's evidence. Mr. Morgensen said, we need more evidence. Well, not really. I'm not sure why that is not evidence. Why do we need to provide more? I I would ask, what has the city provided to say that shipping invoice isn't valid? Mr. Morgensen implied that it's not valid, that anybody could create a shipping invoice. Well, it's up to the city to show why that's an improper invoice. Things were forged, it wasn't real. They haven't shown that. And they have a, they have a, they have a burden, as you know. Then um, you know, we have uh the ability to go to the city to seek a plan amendment. But I'm a land use attorney and I can tell you that such an amendment with environmental impact uh uh studies and alike can easily take nine months. Who knows if it will pass? And by the way, if it's not initiated by the city, and I have no reason to think the city will, given statements of Mr. Morgensen tonight, then it has to be initiated by my client. Initiation by a a person of a zoning change costs tens of thousands of dollars. And if he initiates it, he needs consultants to support him, then he needs me. It's a lot of money. It could take nine months. During that nine months, the use would be abandoned. We're talking about blight. He has no income and we're not sure the city council would approve. So that possibility, I I I don't think is is a fair one to to be offered to us, especially since the law is clear that there has to be shown an intent to abandon. The case law armistead I presented also says that the actions of a tenant cannot be attributed to a landlord. I pointed out that uh it's not your custom and practice in issuing conditional use permits and taking them away because a tenant has changed. Um, and the landlord has no intent to continue with another tenant in the same use. Uh, it's simply not done. It's not fair. And I don't know of any jurisdiction that 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 takes away conditional uses because of uh actions by a tenant uh that show his intent or her intent to to abandon. Mr. Morgensen also emphasized there was no follow through on getting a business license. Well, you know, we've showed you an email from Jennifer Lynn of the city saying you will need to renew it in about six months uh in in June of 2025. Well, obviously, when when Ocean View and my clients saw that, they assumed they already have one. You you, as as my client said, why would there be a a a request to renew if there's why? If there's one in existence? So my client in Ocean View thought, thought there was one in existence. So of course they didn't follow through in in getting a business license. And besides, it was hard for them to do because the fire department, the experience of my client testified that it wants something more operational than Ocean View was able to to have at that time, a real catch 22. Uh, with that, I'll let it rest. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for commission deliberation. The hearing is now closed, commissioners. What does? Want to start?
Well, it's been a lively discussion. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time and coming here. To start, I've heard a lot of evidence and argument as to what the best use for this plot of land is. I, I think we generally tend to agree, but that's not relevant here. And so the question for us is whether there's been more than 90 days of wholly discontinued, non-conforming use. I think the, the information we've been given, that I've been reading, or the lack of makes this very confusing. On the one hand, there was a zoning clearance issued by staff that was outside the presumed 90-day period, or at least the 90-day period that's in my mind now between June 30th to September of 2024. Also, the utility bills. The earliest invoice of the PG&E bill was also outside of that presumed 90-day period. So I'm not sure where that fits. For me, because there's no definition of wholly discontinued, non-conforming use, and it's up to me to define that, I am going to interpret that the intent of the landlord to maintain the use to be fitting within what's to be part of that use. And, and the possibility of any activity, however insignificant or infrequent, that may potentially be part of, or that may fit the term of the non-conforming use to be a reason why I would think that it was not abandoned. And therefore, I would not support the resolution.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm. I also find the, the signals given tonight from all the testimony and evidence very confusing. I think I come to a slightly different conclusion than commission, than Vice Chair Choi, however. I. I appreciate staff supplying us with the lease agreement and the diagram of what area was licensed. To me, it's the inconsistencies that make me wonder about the intention to have, to continue the use. It seems like the fact that Lucid was granted the right to park anywhere in the facility, including the loading dock, would preclude the other tenant, the main tenant, from being able to utilize the facility for the storage and distribution use. And again, the the, the written testimony from, the written response from Ocean View that seems to imply that they were prepared to continue their, their usage indefinitely. It doesn't quite align with what I've heard in terms of the timing of the marketing to the new buyer. You know, I think it is the, the timing of the zoning clearance approval is a little confusing. And it does make me think that the, the owner and the tenant were given clearance to proceed with the non-conforming use, but outside of the 90-day period. But again, I feel like the inconsistencies in terms of the actual activity at the site and other other written agreements that have been shared make me wonder, like, was there ever a like, would Ocean View have ever had the right, would, were they ever in a position to use the facility in a way that it was intended? And how, and so that, to me, makes me makes me think about the, the, makes me think that the, the actual activity of the site was not was not the non-conforming use. So. It's a difficult decision for me based on the confusing signals, but I think I would vote to uphold the resolution presented to us by staff.
Thank you. It's been a lot presented to us. A lot of it was, yes, very confusing, contradictory. I regret any mixed signals that the city may have communicated. But in the end, there is enough evidence to show that there has been abandonment. Nothing's been happening there. I hope in the future, if this ever happens again, we'll have more clear processes in place and notifications and perhaps double-checking on our businesses before we decide these things. But at the end of the day, this is what we have now. And with no water usage, with Lucid occupying all of the outside space, with no business license, and no apparent actual activity, I too will vote yes. If there aren't any other other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Let me just bring the resolution up. All right. I move we approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Millbrae, making a determination of abandonment of a non-conforming use in the retail commercial zoning district in the Millbrae Station area, specific land area at 370 Adrian Road, and making a finding of exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15061B3. It's the little lever.
Oh, that's right. We haven't done this in forever. We brought the thing back. I'll second that. Let me vote?
So I'll just advise the Planning Commission that according to Millbrae Municipal Code, Section 2.10.050, three members of the commission shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. And a majority of the quorum present shall have the authority to act on any matter regularly coming before the commission, such as this one. So a vote of two, one to pass the resolution would pass the resolution.
Thank you for clarifying. Votes? Did you vote?
Thank you. Motion passes two, one.
Thank you. The action of the Planning Commission is considered final pending a 10-day appeal period and the payment of a required appeal fee. For anyone that wishes to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission, please contact the city clerk at 650-259-2414 or ETRAN at ci.milbrae.ca.us with appeal process questions, or visit the City of Millbrae website at ci.milbrae.ca.us. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to new business. I don't see any staff updates.
Yeah, I guess we still have a hearing. My apologies. It's been a long night. I don't have any updates for you.
Nothing? Nothing's going on?
There's a lot of things going on, but I don't have any updates at the moment for you.
Okay.
Do we know if we have, we'll have a meeting on the in, in November?
The next meeting date is November 6th. I'm sorry. It's been a long night. I'm sorry. It's November 3rd. And at this moment in time, we do not have any items scheduled for the November 3rd meeting. So I expect we will be sending out a cancellation notice for that meeting. So. Just to give you a heads up.
Thank you. Commissioner announcements. Alan, are you still on? You're still, you still seem to be there. Can we let him answer? Just to make sure he's really there. Alan, are you still there?
Yes, I've been watching.
Hey, Alan. So I, I, I'm sure I could be the only one who wants to thank you for all your work on the Planning Commission. You've been, you've served for many years and we're very grateful for your service. Sorry to hear you're gone.
Thank you.
I, I do want to add that, Alan, you, when, when I joined the commission, you were the chair. And I've learned so much just one, talking to you, but also hearing how you deliberate, you read, the way you reason, and you talk through the case and provide the details on the very public forum. I thank you for everything you've taught me. So I'm, I'm going to miss you a lot, Alan. I hope the best for you and please take care.
Not sure I have anything more to say beyond what has already been said, but thank you so much for your service on this commission. Alan, and you know, when I was a new commissioner, you know, you and, you certainly were a mentor for me, so, and learned a lot from, from you. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Unfortunately, just caregiving duties and other commitments, unable to finish the last, like, eight months of my second term. Almost made it to eight years, but got seven years in. So I hope you guys are able to keep it going and fulfill those commitments. So fully big commitment.
Thank you. Any other announcements? No?
I want to thank Ms. Tran for assisting us today. This was also our longest Planning Commission meeting in some time, so thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.
Thank you.